That's all for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any changes to the agenda if anybody would like to request? Okay, seeing none. Then let's start with our first public comments section.
Okay, so this is a time for public comments and we're going to have individuals who are here in person be able to speak first. They're going to say their name, what town they live in, and then provide that public comment.
My name is Sheila Nagel. I'm a job resident and I currently have four children playing sports here at home school. I'm here tonight. My husband, Justin, and myself own a commercial concrete company. And we're confronted by some of the boy varsity players asking us to make posters like Gilbert had last year for the season. After looking into it and speaking to many parents on both the girl and the boys team, we decided that we would sponsor it for both teams. We had one of the girls speak with Heather about it and she got approval for all the banners to be in the gym. I did not personally reach out, knowing how much Heather Winston dislikes me, and I did not want that to affect her decision. While we were organizing the photos to be taken, one of the parents said that we can't do it in the gym without getting prior approval. And she assumed we'd get pushback, so I went ahead and I booked a studio with a professional photographer. It took four different photo shoots to organize all the athletes to show up and over fifteen hundred photos. Just to get all the kids done, but they were all happy with the results. After, after we finished with the photos, every athlete helped design their banner by choosing which photos they liked best and then rechoosing again after it was designed, so it could be designed again. This took countless hours and approximately fourteen hundred dollars, but it was all worth it to see how proud they were. By the end, every athlete approved their banner before the order was placed as they got to preview their proof. We spoke with several of the athletes about the logo going on it and informed them that we could either personally sponsor this, my husband and myself, without the logo, or the business could sponsor it, but the logo would have to go on there according to my accountant for tax purposes. Not one athlete chose to do it without the logo. We employ numerous athletes in our company. It has been common practice in the past for our district to recognize any business that donates in any way, considering that we thrive off of donations in the businesses in our community. We had no intention to try to advertise our business, but more so show that our business supports our local athletes. And we're hoping that when other groups were in need of a donation, they would reach out to us. As we have been very blessed and we like sharing with our community. The girls even organized putting the banners up on their own. One athlete communicated with Heather and she approved this request. While putting the banners up, I supervised and helped organize them by teams and grade while the girls hung them in the best spot they thought would be good. Some of the girls wanted to remove the screen and cover two signs, which I advised not to unless they got approval. They wanted to do this because they did not want to cover the bird's nest, but they felt it was very important to our student fans. They emailed Heather Winston and informed her of what they were doing. And she said that was fine, that the screen is very rarely used, but it might have to go back if the class needed. The girls agreed and said they'd remove the banners, replace the screen if needed, and then put the banners back up when they were done. Heather agreed to this via email. Now, throughout the season, so far, myself along with other parents have had very similar experiences with Heather being very rude.
Excuse me, but this is lodging a complaint or making complaints about staff members is not
and I'm trying to show you that we had approval and it's, I mean, I'm not trying to bash anybody in any way.
I understand, and what you've been saying has been fine and you're entitled to it, but I just ask you to, you know, avoid making comments about
any student names or anything.
No, I know, but it's, it's the staff name.
Our policy around communication during board meetings is to make sure that there is nothing that is targeting any specific individual. So what, like what you said is been fine.
Okay.
But if you were going to get into something that would sound like a complaint against an individual, you would need to alter.
I'm officially not trying to file a complaint. I'm just trying to get
Right, I'm just, but if, like, for instance, example, if you were to say the superintendent behaves in a way that I don't like and because he drives his car fast or, you know, that's, that's a separate issue.
Okay.
So you would want to, you'll leave that piece out of the statement. Saying that you had approval and things like that, that's fine. Just wanting to make sure that we're not making a derogatory comment about someone. If there's another issue that you need to talk to the board about individuals, you know, in, in a different way, that's for a non-public conversation.
Okay, so I have in here a very specific example of unprofessionalism with email. Are you saying I should, I'm not allowed to say that?
I would say that that would be something that you would need to do in a different setting.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna skip the part about the numerous parents and what we had, but the reason why I was going to bring up the unprofessionalism is because Tuesday morning I requested all district emails that she sent out due to parent complaints. And then Tuesday afternoon, conveniently, there was an issue where complaints were filed against me and I was banned from the gym. And then immediately after that, phone calls were made from an athletic director to find out who owned Penneville Creek Works. Immediately after that, I was notified that the banners must be removed. These banners were up for a week without any issues. The only thing that we heard were people saying how wonderful they were. We were thanked by numerous community members stating how happy the child was and how proud they were. I even had comments from away teams who knew who I was saying how great it was. I've also been reached out from another school district asking if I would also support them and put banners up for their student athletes. The reason I was given that banners had to be removed is that the school will not advertise for any business. But that simply is not true. Every home game, we thank Laser Pro Foundations and Health Family Insurance for donating to the half-court shop. It is announced twice during every home game. I just left one and I heard it. Also, every year for Hoops for Hope, we advertise on the back shirts every year saying which local companies support our student athletes and support the cause. That was just, students were just notified that will be changing for this year. We will no longer advertise any companies who donate for Hoops for Hope. They were informed by our athletic director that that is illegal. But this spring, she did ask numerous companies to donate for shirts that she was gonna throw out at pep rallies. They were Kona shirts and there's eleven company logos on the back. Our athletic director designed it herself. So it proves that it is not illegal and she knows it's not illegal. I have the front of the shirt, which is just our logo, as well as the back of the shirt with eleven local companies who donated to the cause. This is a hundred percent retaliation because an administrator dislikes myself and my family. It's not a coincidence that there's no issues with these being up until she found out that we paid for them. We did not do this for ourselves or recognition. We did this for the kids. The other reason we needed, we're told that we needed to remove these banners is that the school administrators were not consulted prior to it, which is not true. We have an email trail showing Heather was in communication with the students. She did approve it. She did this in person and via email. Right here, this weekend, we had a parent on the girls' team organize and get permission slips from the students and their parents. And it's addressed to every school board member and then it says to whom it may concern. This document serves as an eloquent that the below student athlete, along with the parent and guardian, get full consent for the current basketball banners, which includes very small local Penneville Creek Works LLC in the lower right-hand corner, to be hung in the Pratt Auditorium during the twenty-three, twenty-four basketball season, signed by both parent and athlete. All we're asking from you guys is to approve that these banners can go back up for the remainder of the basketball season. The other thing that was, I just got right before the school board meeting, is I had a, a meeting with myself and Mr. Duncan, so I could watch my children play basketball, which he's allowing me to do graciously while he looks into the the complaint against me. But in the notes, on the bottom of the notes, it stated something very interesting, which I, I will state that I, I think there's a lot of errors in these notes, but I don't recall him saying this, so he's quoting this. I didn't hear it though. It says that I asked if it's possible if parents and kids sign waivers for the banners to be untouched and remain in the gym. And then it quotes him saying the school will not agree with that. We would have to have an advertising policy placed. The board would not override their own policy to protect our children. The school has to make sure we are not associated with a troubled company. I would like to put it out there. There's never been anything bad with my company and we've never had anything against us. So we're not even close to being a troubled company. And then I did bring this, which I wanted to show you. Every single person has their own banner. This logo down here that we blended in is what the complaint is about. I was told the photographer's information is allowed to stay. My logo is the complaint. It is a moment. It's something inappropriate about this. This is what we'd like you guys to approve to remain in our gym, just like Gilbert High School had last year. Girls have a game tomorrow. Tomorrow, I mean, they said they'd let their banners back up in the gym for
Okay, thank you, Sheila.
May I respond to the last part of the public comment?
Yes, sure.
Sheila is correct that the last statement of the, there about the troubled company was not stated as it was written. It was about in the future, if the, the school has to be careful how their name is used in any sort of advertising role. In case down the road, there's a situation with a company that gets into trouble that we are not seen as being you know, supporters necessarily within that.
And I, and I didn't take it as that during our meeting.
Yeah.
It was, so that's
Yeah, no, I understand. Like, I sent you the notes that, you know, were done in shorthand and so forth, just so you've had the understanding.
That's why I was saying I wasn't trying to fool you.
No, you did a good job with that. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's, just wanted to make sure that was stated.
Okay. Other, other public comments? Yes, Mr. Connors.
Try to be brief here. Tom Coney is a Ridge muscle-oriented member representing the selectmen for the budget committee. I was at a public meeting last week and an individual who was a high school student in the school indicated that their student came home and was speaking to the parent and that the instructor in the class was discussing budget ramifications with this student. Really, Ruben, you ought to be talking to your teachers about this. It was very negative conversations or discussion about it that the budget didn't pass. Class is all done. And I can't speak to the exact verbatim what was said because I got it secondhand from the parent. But my guts telling me that there are probably other instructors in this school district that are discussing budget matters with students directly, indirectly, or around the block, so to speak. It is absolutely unacceptable, in my opinion, that any teacher discuss anything budget-related with student care. And I would expect that this administration stress this problem because I don't want to hear it again. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Then I'll ask the digital group if they have anything.
Okay.
Jennifer Horn Ringe, good evening. I have lived in this community and had children in these schools for twenty years. I've worked in this district for the last six. In that time, I have seen my children work diligently to find their place in our community. They have participated, been participants in a large variety of sports, clubs, and activities, but have often been on the outside looking in when I have quietly sat back and let them bite their own mouths and supported them in their endeavors. Over the last few years, a more inclusive culture has emerged. I attribute this growth to the tireless leadership of the building administration, the activities director, and the vision of the district leadership. One giant step towards this was made by this board this spring when we became Connet Middle High School, inclusive six through twelve. The message was clear. All means all. All are valuable and there is a place for everyone. That was a very proud moment for me as a leader and advocate for disenfranchised and marginalized students. And for me as a mom of children who are not star athletes, but have deep valuable connections to their school community and talents and a whole host of other friends. It was with great sadness, displeasure, and frankly discomfort that I arrived at the Pratt Auditorium on Thursday night to celebrate the talents and growth of my son and scores of other children in grades six through twelve. And I found myself sitting in what equates to a shrine to the Connet High School varsity basketball teams. In one fell swoop, the feeling of inclusion and worth was stripped from me as a parent. My son has been honing his talents, practicing, and performing for over nine years. He is part of a team. He works hard and he takes great pride in what he does. He performs in the only space available on our campus, the classroom space that turns into a performance venue for athletes, thespians, and musicians. The banners that graced the wall of the Pratt Thursday night did not promote one single student who performed that night. They excluded over fifty learners that night and two hundred fifty community members who were in attendance to celebrate the hard work of these talented and brave students. The message was sent, and I'm sure it was inadvertent, was that the only real value in this hollow venue is the varsity basketball team. Everyone else is a guest. This is a deplorable message that has been sent for many years, but was starting to go away. I am not okay with its return. I have spoken to other parents and they had the same feelings Thursday night and also expressed some of the same sentiments that I had hoped were gone. Basketball culture at Connet just does that. There is nothing that can be done and you just need to accept it. I'm not in agreement with just accepting it. And for the first time in twenty years, I am standing up to share my voice for students and parents who may not be aware that they even have. I in no way wish to diminish the experience and value of the basketball players. They have spent years honing their talents, working as a team, and they should be celebrated. I am just requesting that we don't inadvertently devalue a population of equally worthy Connet students in the process. I do have a couple of suggestions that I would like to offer to the board. First and foremost, the Pratt is a classroom for grade six through twelve. Whatever is hung or celebrated in that space needs to be inclusive of all the students who use that space during the day. All means all. We are all Connet Middle High School. If we want to celebrate the current sports teams using the Pratt as their home court, I am all for it. I suggest we do so in the same manner that we celebrate all other students' success throughout the student, the student-generated materials. During home games, I'm all for adding those banners that I saw on Thursday. Hang them up for home games and then remove them after. That being said, I would respectfully request that all members of the team be present along the walls during home games if that is a decision that is made. If you were to walk down to the Pratt twenty minutes ago, you would see up that home basketball game in session, including a cheer squad and a pep band as part of the Connet team. The exclusion of these Connet community members who also take great pride in their respective talents and roles was glaring. Not only students, not all students are basketball players, but many students want to be part of the school community. They have found their spots in these organizations and should also be celebrated. I respect the parents who put the posters together and as a parent of a student, I am incredibly proud and want to celebrate. I can understand the thought behind the posters. I am hopeful that the exclusion and message sent to other members of this school community was completely inadvertent and the process can be set up to eradicate that message moving forward. I would also ask this board to consider whether a policy should be implemented to clarify the promotion and celebration of students in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna try, this is one, again, not the greatest setup here, but to give anyone in the audience, visual audience, an opportunity to for public comment. If you are interested, if you can raise your hand and I can call your name. The hand raised feature. Would it be okay for David Dustin to make a public comment? He's not a resident.
Yes, if, if it's okay with me, if you would recommend.
I, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to address the, the banner situation. I appreciate the comment that was made. But I want to be clear that the sequence of events that led to the request for the banners to be temporarily removed was not initiated by the activities director. It was actually initiated by an individual contacting me as the principal and, and asking if I was aware of the banners having an ad on them. And so upon investigation and looking at the policy, I reached out and asked that the banners come down on the advice of the district's legal counsel and things like that pending a resolution of the advertisement. So I just want to be clear that this was in no way driven by the activities director. And there was a compromise offered to cover the advertisements up and seek photo permission from some families of individuals who did not have photo permission to then place them back in the gym. And as, as we heard from another parent tonight, and we are looking at a system where we could have them up on temporary basis and things like that to avoid them getting damaged and otherwise making the space exclusively for just that one sport. So I just wanted to clarify that piece. I think that's an important distinction to note. And the other factor that I wanted to clear up is that the requesting of donations for things like fifty-fifty shots for fundraising or fundraising for shirts, those are school solicited fundraisers where the school has gotten permission to do things like buy t-shirts, for example. And there are carve-outs in the policy that was shared that, that covers advertising and it does permit the school and school publications, particularly with superintendent permission for nonprofit reasons to solicit donations to support school events. And that was not the case in this instance. You know, again, upon consulting with the legal counsel and things like that, it became clear that these banners would not be considered a donation. They would not become the property of the school district like a donation would be. So they were governed by an advertisement, which is why they had to be, again, remedied. So I just want the board to be clear on the sequence of events and clear up some of those other pieces. There is an opportunity that has been extended to return the banners. We're just awaiting that being done and then they'll be put back up for home games for each team. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, David.
There is anyone else? I'll give you about fifteen seconds to the hand raised feature. Seeing any, we can continue.
Okay, and if anybody jumps up in the next couple of minutes, let us know. We do have another public comments section at the end of the agenda. Okay. And now, Madeline, we're glad to see you here and welcome your student representative for the floor.
Thank you. Well, not much has changed since the last board that I've been to. I'm a current member of the draft. And I think sometimes it's nice to share what we've been doing because it's not always public. So I think our next big project that we're focusing on is collecting donations for different homeless shelters, even the one locally. And I know we're also donating towards Hundred Nights in King. Right now, we're focusing on collecting socks because that's one of the biggest donation needs currently, especially since it's cold and everything. So in our service committee is, we, we just got our approval. So as soon as we come back from break, we're starting donation boxes and we're gonna have flyers. And we're hoping we can get a pretty big donation from the school community. We, we've had good luck with past interact fundraisers, so we're really looking forward to it. And I know all the students are super excited for break. We only have one week left, too, buddy. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madeline. And what, what, what do you plan to do during your time off? Are you gonna be studying every day or?
I don't know. I'm taking two, I'm taking two online classes, so I do have a little bit of work, but other than that, I'm spending the rest of my time with my family.
Okay, okay, excellent. Does anybody else have any questions for, for Madeline? And if no, thank you for being here. And yeah, we definitely appreciate it. Okay, I guess we're ready for the superintendent's report.
Right, well, you're gonna be hearing a lot from me tonight, so I'm gonna make this portion of it a little briefer. Just that there's been, it's been a busy time of the year. We've had some really neat events, many of which were actually alluded to from our athletic teams playing and doing really well. Very proud of how, I think, hard we, we fight out there on the court, both our all of our teams. And then also, while I was, I, I missed the event, unfortunately. I heard really great and really wonderful things about the performance on Thursday night here in the Pratt. I know that just, it's a, it's a nice time of the year where so much of our student population, elementary as well as secondary, gets an opportunity to bring community together to be able to display their talents and we do a great job here in our school district. It's, this last couple of weeks has been filled with a lot of budget conversations. A lot of conversations around CTE, which is career and technical education. Planning that and working on a, an application that's sent into the state by January first. Actually, at four thirty today, I had a hour-long meeting with our architects to discuss our next steps around that. So we'll meet with them again, or at least one of them on the twenty-eighth of December, just to make sure that we haven't forgotten everything and everything's kind of wrapped up. And so multiple people are working on this application. The application consists of, of course, architectural drawings, concepts, communication, showing how we've communicated with community and get, embrace the feedback from students, from the packs of these, these types of learning groups like culinary arts, the construction trades, and the other two programs as well. And then also needing to make sure that we find the budgeted or rough budgeted amounts for all the equipment that's gonna be in these spaces. And we have to do crosswalks with all the curriculum as well for all of these, three of these courses or three of these programs. We've never had curriculum for before, so it's been a lot of the high school administration has been doing a lot of work researching that and putting that together. So people are working hard. We believe we'll get that all situated and have a good application for the state to consider. And when that does go forward, they'll have an opportunity to ask us questions and we'll keep on going after that. And I think that I'll keep it at that for now.
Okay, thank you, Ruben. And does anyone have questions for Ruben about anything?
Ruben, are you handing up the writing of the grant? Is somebody helping you? Like, what's the process in actually writing?
Yeah, well, there's a, an outline that the state gives. And so the high school administration's really taken the charge on that. I do have to write some letters, basically promising that we want to go forward with this. want to go forward with this. I would need the board to, you know, formally say after I show you some information tonight later on, yes or no, we want to go forward or we don't want to go forward with the next phase, the application and that we're committed to this product, project. The state wants to know that there's a good shot, there's a good chance that the time that they're putting in and the money that they're considering going forward to ask for in the legislature, that it's going to be used properly. So we definitely do have a out of the seven to nine different designs, initial designs that we were provided. One rose to the top and was by far the number one choice by all individuals, all groups that had weighed in on it. So my part really has to do with collecting some documents and writing some letters.
Okay, good, thank you. And so now we're ready for the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions regarding the agenda? Okay. Then hearing nothing in the way of questions or requests.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
No. Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chris, thank you.
Second that.
And Christine, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? But carried seven zero. Okay, thank you. And now we're on to our action items. And the first action item on our list tonight is the proposed budget finalization for twenty four, twenty five. Ruben, I guess it's gonna be back to you. Okay.
So for those who are joining via Zoom, I just needed to make sure that the screen was shared with you as well as it was shared up for the public. So it's all situated that way. So last well, a couple Saturdays ago, we met, we discussed this very agenda right here. And so I'll be going over briefly some of those slides that we had shared at that point in time. These will, we will move through them fairly quickly so that we can get on to the work that was done after that timeframe. But because there are several people who are on tonight and also other individuals in our public right now that have not heard some of these conversations, I think it's worthwhile in doing so. So first and foremost, the way we approach the budget is to be future focused and to do so in a sustainable way. It certainly has been difficult over the last couple of years due to high inflation coming out of the COVID pandemic and everything that has transpired during that timeframe and since then as well that have certainly caused a lot of stress and financial hardship really for many. The school district has certainly not been not been shielded from the economic matters that that kind of have have taken place over the last couple of years. The however, I think it's important that when we talk about future focus and sustainable, that we've been doing this for a long time and that some of the decisions that we've made earlier in like years ago, nine, eight, seven, five years ago, are helping us with our budget this year, meaning our budget could be a whole lot higher had the board, the school board in particular, not made really intelligent decisions years ago. And some of those decisions were made certainly with administration, with community input as well as with negotiating with our employees and teachers groups as well. One of these examples of future focused, sustainable financial decisions was when we moved from nine years ago from our our HMO or our point of service healthcare plans to the kind of plan that we have right now, which is a consumer driven plan. And so whereas if you've you know, I was at a superintendent's meeting the other day on Friday, come right in, on Friday and just to hear the percentages increases that so many of these districts are having, you know, sixteen percent, seventeen percent, twenty five percent. And the, that that turns into real dollars. And so they're they're starting their budgets already, you know, up five hundred thousand, a million, a million and a half higher than they were before. And we are also starting our budget higher as a result of healthcare increases. But two hundred thousand dollars is very different, six point two percent, or I think is the average right now for where we're at. Is is certainly in a, in a different space than say twenty percent that so many are having this year. Over the course of the years, we estimate that we've at least saved, this is a conservative amount, over a million. So had we not gone and made those hard decisions that have helped us in a variety of different ways. Back then, you know, we'd be in a different place now even have, starting the conversation. So kudos to all those individuals. And there are many groups of individuals who are part of that decision. Combining the middle and high school communities, you know, there's a lot of philosophical reasons and cultural and sense of belonging type of reasons and research based reasons why we would do that. But there's also a lot of, from a budget standpoint, a lot of reasons to do this to be able to make sure that we are being efficient in our operations. And we've talked about that over the years. Future focus and sustainable financial decisions, another example is our focus on early childhood. And so when we're focusing on early childhood, specifically in this budget, we're really talking about pre K. And so Jeffrey Ringe Cooperative School District should be very proud. We're definitely on the shortlist of school districts in the state of New Hampshire who offer full day four year old pre K. All week long, four, four and a half days, I guess you would, you would say. And this is rooted in research to be able to not only help our kids become ready for school and help them academically, but it actually is a strong community investment. And so years of research has shown that communities that focus early and put their money in early in this area of three, four year olds and, and quality child education get a significant payoff many years down the road as well. And so it is about sustainability and not just the finances, but in helping the community grow and thrive. This is a more recent example and we're still working out the kinks with the HVAC systems. It's not perfect yet. We still have individuals that we're having meetings with and trying to get the system balanced and so forth. But we know that in our planning, our long range planning, that this was the number one issue that needed to be done. We were able to do this in a, a good way, a responsible way, rather than piecemealing things together and spending a ton of money over the years. And the whole project together costs about eight million, seven hundred thousand dollars for all schools for the HVAC and air quality work that has been done here. Now, we were fortunate because three million of that, we didn't have to put toward the voters because we were able to use federal funds for that. We had a limited timeframe to be able to use that and we were able to do that in in a good way. And then, of course, we have the the lease. We know that as of three weeks ago, that if we started that same work right now, that same project would be four million dollars more than what we spent. And specifically, probably to, if we were to have passed it, which maybe it wouldn't have passed. I would like to think it would have because of the need that we had, but it would be seven million more to the taxpayers because we probably wouldn't have had the federal funds to help balance that out. We have been working very hard with both bolstering our partnerships. There are lots of conversations we could have around that. And kind of a neat side, this is not about finances, but congratulations to FPU for a second national championship in soccer. And their national championship soccer team came and did clinics for our middle school players this past fall. It was really neat, but we're in the process of building on the partnership that we have, which is really strong and actually adding about two or three other experiences as well relative to science and other types of programming. This, while I have to be careful how much I talk about, how specifically I talk about this because it can get into identifying individuals. We know that things are in society are, are different, that kids have come to school early on with trauma sometimes and that manifests in different ways and often in ways that are that, that disrupt their own learning environment as well as many others. And so we've implemented something called the restorative classroom over at Jeffrey Grade School for this type of learner, it would be idea of not sending these individuals out of district, which costs a significant amount of money. Possibly if we were successful to keep bringing people back into district, which is help, helpful as it pertains to budget. And of course, long term, again, sustainable is you want our learners to be in our community. They want them to be with the kids in our community to grow and to learn respectful and appropriate interactions and so forth, so that they're able to stay within our community. And this goes beyond middle school, beyond high school. This goes into the economic development of our communities here. So we made that investment and we've had some significant early outcomes. So on Saturday, we talked about the priorities. The priorities we talked about in the elementary, number one was maintaining universal access to pre K. The second one was we have the need to intensify our approaches to reading and the science of reading. There's been a lot of research done for years and years. It's been put together. The state is helping provide professional development right now, letters training. Letters training has been around for a while, but it's now free for our staff. Many of our staff are doing that. And we need the resources and the strategies and extra professional development to be able to make sure that we're capitalizing on the this, this timeframe, when we're able to bolster our reading and literacy programming and get some synergy K through eight. So that is a one time expense. Obviously, if there's consumables, that would be annually, but the big costs are, are the, for the, you know, for about seven years, eight years, ten years perhaps, is this one time expense. That, however, we will find out is not reflected in the draft budget for reasons we'll talk about. The third priority, this one actually is a we have not also put it in the budget because of needing to make sure the budget is at a certain dollar amount. This is definitely, we're forecasting here what needs to take place. RMS needs to get a STEM teacher. They need to get, implement that STEM program and that will have not only benefits for the learners that are there, like they're experiencing, that they're experiencing in JGS right now in their pilot year of this. But also gives the flexibility for the community to schedule differently and have a lot more collaborative during the day, data driven planning sessions, which is very important for making sure that all of what is done in the school setting is is the, is the best that we can plan for. We shared, we shared, you know, data around the why pre K is beneficial within our district, even just from our own data this year. Both in ELA and math, we talked about the complexities of reading and literacy, that this is not something you just go and plan for, like you have to, people have to be trained, you have to have the right resources, you have to have the right focus. We have to have everything we need in order to really make sure that we maximize our kids' learning. This is just a conversation route, priority number three, STEM. The secondary level, we, again, we talked about how a couple of years ago, when we had that default budget, this, this school did a lot of changes. They, they acted quickly. They acted on the model of leadership that we've been implementing over the past five to six years of shared decision making and they did an unbelievable job. That being the case, we are to the point where we do, we did lose a math teacher during that timeframe. We are at a spot where we do need to have another math teacher or that math teacher back. We have many more individuals taking math courses, science courses as well. And this increase is becoming, is making it difficult for us to function in the way we need to. Plus, we want to make sure that we're providing that quality education for people who want to be taking those maths and science courses. This is just classroom data, math data. You've seen those slides before. Putting it on here because this will go and be uploaded on to the website so that people can go and look at that at their leisure. Co-curriculars, again, something that we have not put in the budgets or have we taken, excuse me, out of the budget for now is something that we need to continue to have conversations about. This item right here relates with another topic that we'll have tonight. And we can talk about it more when we get there. We do have the certified athletic trainer in the budget. Finding one is another, is another issue, but we still need to make sure that we get that. Student services, we want to, and we are also required to provide a faith, a free, appropriate public education. And that means something different for different learners, different types of learners. It's not always in the traditional classroom and that's part of the, it goes back to that restorative classroom that we talked about, that has actually saved the district significant amounts of money, but it's also showing significant educational and social gains for those kids too, which is what you want. You want all of it to happen. We do things right, that all takes place. It costs money when you have out of district placements, when you have legal responsibilities, when you have transportation. You know, that you have, that you're responsible for, not only for our school, but for any charter school where our kids go to and, and sometimes private schools as well. We are responsible for, for the special education of those individuals. And so you'll see that our largest increases are in the budget are in that area. That being said, tonight, we're gonna talk about how we've reduced those numbers from the last time. And facilities, we talked about trying to make certain that we were keeping up with the repairs. Continuing on with our painting and flooring, which are things that you make an immediate impact for all individuals within the school setting. Also needing some equipment that is old or we don't have. And then in district wide, maintaining staffing as much as we possibly can. You will see that in my conversation in just a few moments, that this has changed since the last time. But also maintaining, because it's in our district wide budget, is maintaining our technology purchasing cycles. This was what we showed on that Saturday in that initial session where we had a default budget of five point five percent above the current adopted budget. It says they're approved, it should be the adopted budget. And then a two point eight percent on top of that. So about two point five million was higher than the current was where we were at. Looking at all the numbers of all those priorities, putting those in, understanding that collective bargaining agreements with JRSSA, those then were put into the budget that weren't in there before. Other warrant articles like that, that that come into play. So.
Twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five.
That's correct. That's correct. Those are those are all a year off, all year off. You're right. Um so. With that, since then. The board members requested a reduced proposed budget. They said. We get the priorities. The money is not there. So if possible. There was conversation about getting that proposed below default. If possible, try to get that to offset another item that we're talking about tonight, the J R E A School Board tentative agreement, the C B A. Buying items that can be purchased and beneficial to use now. That was something else that we were to look at and attempt to stay away from staff reductions. Schools got together, um elementary schools got together, proposed a few things. Well, they gave me a list of items that could be purchased right now, some that we can get within this budget right now, and I wouldn't put those forward to you. Um bigger items like the curriculum, the reading curriculum, that is something that would have to be purchased in a different. In a different way. The elementary schools actually uh through this time, we always take this budget time to think, are there any efficiencies or are there any things that we can do better? Even if you reduce the cost, can we do it in a different way and maybe even gain somehow? And we were able to do that um in years past. This time around. I thought a really neat conversation was the two elementary principals, and I know that they had already had conversations with uh other individuals within their schools. Had said, you know, we could do E S Y and we could do the pep camp. Um that we have every single year. We could do that at one site as opposed to both sites. And that means that you wouldn't have to have as many staff um in there. You would need your paraprofessionals. You could have. You know, a similar number of teachers, but also because if we have it at RMS, RMS has a great outdoor, they have fourteen acres there that really we don't utilize um all the time. And certainly there's during the summertime, it's not in use a lot, but we have some individuals who would like to do some outdoor learning. And we have teachers who have um expertise in that area. And so being able to add that actually to. Um the experience for all of those kids who choose to come into the summer is is going to be an addition as a result of putting it into one location. It's also savings of about fifteen thousand dollars. So we're kind of excited about seeing what that type of pilot would look like for this coming summer. So we have certainly listed the items out, technology. Co curricular increases, facilities, supplies and equipment. I say supplies because we would in years past, we would have called it equipment, but. The definition of supplies now is anything five thousand and below or under five thousand dollars. So it's a. It's just how it's categorized. And then out of district placement, we had to look at some of that. Uh we wanted to make room for the priority positions uh in order to do that uh. And to try to do that top bullet that the board was looking for to get below the default. There aren't many ways currently to be able to do that. And the default, which is just a number, it's a it's a number and it there's a lot of, you know, things that make up that number. But more specifically, the default right now is based upon F T E, so full time employees. Now, it doesn't necessarily um. It, you know, get so specific about what those F T Es are, and so I can trade F T Es. Out that we would need is and as long as the dollar amounts and so forth came up to um what we needed. And so in order to get those priority areas in, take them out of this kind of proposed area. And get them to be like, I'm talking about the pre K program, the actual the uh the second restorative classroom. All those areas, all those things that we want the math teacher. I can't with if you're not going to just add them, they've got to be, they better replace another full time employee. And so in in listening to community, I listen, I. Follow all of the um social media in both communities, so I know what is said, what's not said and how it's said. But um you know, there's comments regarding about S A U and and being, you know, overstaffed and stuff like that. I would argue that that's. That's not the case, and we could show that that's the case, but we. We did take a position here that those four permanent substitutes, which are within the all district lines. And the there's two point five S A U positions, two of those S A U positions. A coordinator and a um. And a supervisor, uh those didn't exist pre covid. And so all like six of those positions were new due to covid. And so we said, all right, we're we're a couple of years past that. Now, while we're dealing with the with many. Post covid issues within our schools. We felt all right, but to help that better, we need to give the schools, we need to make sure that our resources are put as close to the children as possible. And so um that is what we were trying to do. Uh also. We were able to look at trend data. I haven't done that for a couple of years because the trends. Got blown up with covid basically, and so we used to take a certain chunk of money out of our student services. Saying, all right, I know that these are our actuals, but what ends up happening year after years, we have. Like a minimum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars left over that and that has stayed true. Um so we went back to that. The easiest way to do that is to remove positions out of. Or in this case, I say trade positions out of um the budgets and that removes, you know, like two hundred forty, two hundred fifty thousand dollars there. And we and that's the buffer that we believe that we have. We also went in there and said, you know what? Um we have some uh out of district placements. Sometimes we have a often we've had a trend of. Some of these placements either being uh cheaper placements than what we believe is going to be the case, or the students um end up. Uh moving out of district or some other reason. So we took a modest amount out of out of district placements as well. So probably within student services with that increase, we probably took about four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand dollars out of that area. We do have.
And that came out of the default.
And that came out, well, it came out of the default. It also comes out. Yeah, yeah, it did come out of the default, and that's why you that's the primary reason is of that why you see. The default going from five point five percent to the three point seven percent that you'll see later on. Okay, and then that then allows us, if we're able to pre buy. Very important uh equipment, supplies, curriculum documents, we're able to do that. We're we are going to, I am presenting a budget that is less than default. Um by by uh about a hundred twenty five, hundred twenty seven thousand dollars from there. So that's. Um we'll get to that. So these are just some examples of the reading materials. Um the I have red stars and blue stars. The red stars are things that. We are not comfortable like we could have that much money at the end of the year. But we also might not, and certainly it's not showing that we will. We know we have the funds to be able to purchase right now. Like, you know, tomorrow or January first, you know, um those blue items right there, STEM curriculum materials. The M T S S B um materials that we use for um you know, second step. Uh which is being implemented, you know, through our schools. And the um furniture, the variety of furniture and and smaller educational supplies. That they um had taken out of their budget area. Things like the tractor, things like floor machines, cleaning machines, things like the technology and so forth. Those are bigger items and um you know. Really, if you're if you go to pre buy things, it should be things that you can utilize now. We definitely could utilize the um reading curriculum now. It'd be really smart actually to have it a half a year ahead of full implementation. For um people to get used to that, we can um that would be like that would even just be. Educationally a bright move to make. And then, of course, the tractor, we could use that now if I assuming it's ever going to snow. Um but also for the spring and to make sure that we have our fields the way that they need to be. And then uh technology, certainly, um the Chromebooks, we could hold off a little bit, but. The firewall and the wireless access points are are needs, so it's all of these things um could be utilized right now.
Historically, how much have we carried over? Carried over might not be the right word.
Yeah, so last year we were able to retain your unassigned fund balance retention is a million and like. Uh two hundred or two thousand dollars, a million dollars is what you have because you're able to carry the five percent over and hold it there. We've used it for emergency purposes usually. But we also were able to, after all revenue came in, and that comes in late sometimes. Um and and student service did a great job with Medicaid reimbursement. That's like the biggest we've had in in a long time. And most people are not seeing that, so kudos to your your department. Um we were able to give about six hundred, six hundred fifty thousand back to offset taxes this year.
So the total was like, I think, around one point six million.
That's.
End of the year.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, some of that one that one was carried over in the sense, you know what I mean? It's not, it's not. Okay, true. Like, we didn't actually have an extra million. Yeah. But we. I think we ended up having about, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand or whatever. Some of that money went into the fund retention, you know. To and to maintain what it what what you have been maintaining, you know, carrying over and then the six hundred thousand to back to the taxpayers. So this is what it looks like now. Again. I swear I've changed those numbers on the bottom, and I don't know why. Maybe this is a different version than what my final version was, but. The it should be two thousand twenty three, twenty four adopted. It should be twenty four, twenty five default and twenty four, twenty five draft proposed. So that should all be up one more year. Um so the default using that same order of colors as the last time. Uh is instead of being up five point five percent, if you vote the budget down. This budget down, and I I really can't change default. Any more than this would be three point seven one percent. Um which actually is in the ballpark better than a lot of the what I was hearing at my our regional. Regional meetings. Um not saying it's great. Uh it's certainly more than you've done in the first seven years that I was here. It's only been recently that we've had those increases due to significant inflation. Um we the proposed, the draft proposed is a hundred twenty seven thousand, seven hundred lower than that, so at three point three percent. Still a good, you know, still a lot, you know, uh still a lot higher um than what we'd want, but. Um that includes, again, the two hundred thousand dollar increase in health insurance. It includes the J R S S A C B A costs going into the following year. It includes other um increases in and. Pay payroll and so forth. I mean, most of our costs, our highest level costs are people in general, so and then. Yeah, that's that's basically what the of this changes. And so this is a draft warrant article of what that would look like. If we were to look at it just. What I just showed. Um so you'd have a proposed budget of thirty one, seven seventy three, five forty three, and if that were to fail, you'd have a thirty one, nine zero, one, two, three, nine. So a default budget at a higher. Higher uh level there. Um I know that the board had requested seeing what you could do to get down to the amount that would get closer to covering the C B A. We're going to talk about the C B A in a little bit. I don't see how you do that without, I mean, that's that's another, you know, four hundred thousand or so. Um that's. That's a that's a when we're already talking about the big ticket buying items needing to be. Purchased in order to get to these numbers, that's the only way to to do that formally is to talk positions. Um or programming, which often is positions. So um when it comes to a school setting. Because we don't have a lot of programs per se that like are outsourced. Um we do outsource some of our. Uh psych services and things like that because we can't. Or we, you know, the district has not been successful in hiring a uh school psychologist for the district. It's it's not, we don't have. We don't have a collective bargaining agreement that would get us close to those type of niche positions. Um most of those positions do a lot better by being contracted and working for an outside company. But there there are necessary services that we have to purchase. So that's what I have for the presentation. I know there can be discussion. I know that I see hands raised already, so. I can talk in more detail if you have questions. But I tried to be as quick as I could.
Okay, thank you. Questions for.
So it would be really important, just if anyone who from the public who speaks, if you're going to allow that to happen, if we go to the microphone and. So that's recorded properly and just say who you are.
Ju- just to clarify, I want my intent. Was to allow the two budget advisory committee members to to speak.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, if you can just move that over, that's perfect. That that works out well. Nice, nice, nice plan. Okay.
So I'm clear what you have up there for the proposed budget. Go back to the previous slide. Uh one more. So all those numbers total up to about four hundred fifteen twenty thousand dollars. So in order to achieve. Which you proposed in the warrant article. All of that has to take place.
You know, well. Two it two ways of looking at it. In order to achieve what I put forward as the proposed. We would either have to not purchase any of that or parts of that. Or we would need to um purchase those items, yes, beforehand in order for. It for it not to be in the budget. Uh again, number one was one of the priorities. Number two, the the blues are are we can handle. Um those other ones, uh number seven is a priority as well, the technology in particular, because we. Experienced what happened when we put a year off of that cycle. That was um. That was not good. Yep.
So my understanding is that you're asking the board to approve these expenditures out of this year's unexpended fund balance.
Yes.
So in essence, you're. Spending the taxpayers' money. Instead of applying it towards the budget moving forward.
This it is, it's, yeah, spending already taxpayer approved money, yes.
Because these are items that you wanted in your. Initial proposed budget.
That is correct.
So you're circumventing. Reducing your budget by spending money that's already been allocated for the.
I am suggesting that.
Just wanted to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah.
In in essence, by doing this.
Yeah.
You're really not reducing your budget. You're just. Not adding things you want in the budget. That makes sense.
That I I think it's semantics, but I.
It is.
Yep.
First of all, huge kudos to the principals for the summer.
Yeah.
Solution. I. They worked the pep camp at both sites over the years and uh to let go of one site, people get territorial. I think that's super exciting and so many people are staffed through that, so many especially paraprofessionals, dozens. Um that you can do this without, you know, using that staff, that you can have a quality program at one site. I'm thrilled with that solution. I think that's.
We we would reduce some of the necessary the the teaching.
Right.
Um components of teachers, um because you could have the the ratios would still be good. Um you wouldn't exactly have it, but you could reduce it that way. And we have annually had difficulty hiring, so for some.
Um second, it looks like you're looking for a public healing for three hundred and sixty two, two fifteen.
So. With, yeah, between three hundred fifty and four hundred, I would want to get the the numbers down. Once we know what's curriculum, the curriculum could come in less than a hundred seventy thousand, but certainly. I would think no more than than what those numbers are. And I don't think it's going to be above that number, I mean, but um yeah, it would be, I would be. And I don't think it's gonna be above that number. I mean, but, um, yeah, it would be, I would be asking for a public hearing.
Is that a motion to Charlie? What's the, what's the process for that?
Well, I mean, it just, I mean, Charlie can answer. I was, uh, the reason why, yes, if you're gonna use the unassigned fund balance retention. That is that they currently have over of a million to do this. Then what you would. Do is you would have to have a public hearing to ex- to ex- express why or what you are. You know, spending this money on or why you're doing that. And so, um, none of this, which which is nice in the way that you're keeping it nice and transparent as opposed to just. Doing things behind the scenes. Yeah.
So what is the process for the board out saying, yes, we want a public?
The you're in discussion right now, so I don't, I don't know what, I mean, I think you can make a motion and someone can second it, and I'm sure there's a lot of discussion that would happen. If that's something you want to do.
I wanna make a motion to hold a public hearing in early January for. Uh, the purpose of allocating funds from the assigned fund balance in the amount of. In the range of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, depending on what numbers come back.
You need to be more specific. You're gonna post it, right? So you need to post the exact date, location, amount, so forth. So I think there needs to be a little bit more homework. Before we move forward with the. Public hearing.
I I that's, I think that's what we're starting is the, you know, I'm starting a motion for the discussion, but because we have deliberative coming. The first of fe- area of February. The timing of posting, getting the supervisor, the checklist, getting everything, we need two weeks to put everything in place. So the numbers and the timing, we're talking a month that we're looking at. So we need to, the discussion needs to happen. Now to say, yes, give us firm numbers so that we can understand to us. Starting that.
If you're asking for, we need firm dates and numbers from the administration. That's a whole different thing than. Moving to have a public hearing.
There may be another. I heard, I heard something that within what you were saying, maybe um, a motion to have the board. Indicate. That they want to have a public hearing. You know, with the understanding that in order to set the dates and so forth, they you need to have a certain amount of information. I suppose that's that's another way. Or you could make a motion that we would want a public hearing before the end of January. And the board and direct the superintendent to come back with exact figures. In early June, something to that effect.
I'd like to look at the school board calendar.
Yeah, yep. I mean, you could also make it in February if you wanted to as well.
Is there any other discussion? We've heard a lot, so anybody else have?
Go ahead, Charlie. I'll go first. First one is the subs. All right. We said that we couldn't get enough subs when we needed them. So we went out and we increased the salaries for subs. Then we turn around and said, okay, we're gonna have permanent sub in each school. Cause there is not one day that goes by in a school, somebody else. So we have a permanent sub in that school to to go by. So in November, when we got budget pitches from the. Schools, all right. The second highest priority of RMS and JGS was to keep the subs. And now you were gonna get rid of the subs. I don't necessarily support that. I think that what we did to put them in place for a purpose, they have value. And I think that there's other places we can cut. Like I said, you know, when we come along with things like STEM curriculum materials. Now, uh, science, K to eight, science of reading curriculum materials. All right, we're embarking on a whole new curriculum. What replay, what did that? What was there before? What did it cost? And how much are we saving by not doing it again? Cause obviously there are consumables. All right, we're talking course curriculum materials, there are textbooks and consumables and so forth. So the the, you know, that's one thing I'd be interested in is, hey, if we're gonna start all these new programs, is there anything that? That falls by the wayside because we're doing something that.
Specifically for the science of reading, first, uh, reading, reading itself is not a new program. Um, it's something that we do. It's a something that we want our kids to hopefully be on track by third grade. As the research indicates, that's the grade level that if you're on target, you tend to have a better result. All the way through life, actually. It's been since before I was here, that that I first came here, that. Um, any sort of reading materials, core reading instruction materials and support purchased. So it's been a long time. We haven't. We took it out of the budget. Matter of fact, I remember taking out the curriculum replacement cycle because there was a forty thousand dollar curriculum. Replacement cycle my first year that had been going on for a long time. And so, uh, we said, listen, we. Don't wanna necessarily, I mean, it's not a bad idea to have a curriculum replacement cycle. But if you don't know what curriculum it is, you're going to be replacing and what you need to do, then you're just spending forty, fifty. Thousand dollars every single year just to purchase stuff. And we had. Unfortunately, when we cleaned out, you know, places, we found out that there were some curriculum. Uh, materials that hadn't been used and had been because of this constant purchasing process. So we stopped that. So. You know, there's been hundreds of thousands of dollars of cycle stuff that we took out of the budget for all these years. We're at a spot right now where we have um, different staffing, a lot of new staff. We have um, more. Um, research around what best reading practice and some materials are. There are better materials out there. So these aren't replacing anything other than the fact that our teachers are currently utilizing um, books. Like literature, which is great. If if we are all. Highly skilled instructors to be able to use books, um, you know, that you would take out of a library. And. Be able to adequately make sure we're teaching decoding phonemical awareness. Or phonological awareness, sorry, sight recognition, vocabulary knowledge, background knowledge, language structures, literacy knowledge, verbal reasoning as. A a learner's brain takes all of that in and does everything. If we, if we had, that's a lot of skill. And, uh, while we certainly have teachers who do have those skills to be able to do that, by and large. Not everyone has those game skill sets and can utilize that type of literature in the way that we need it to happen. We have some early literacy results that would. Probably back that up a little bit. And um, it's not for lack of trying and lack of just giving a lot of good instruction. If you don't have the right materials and right resources, our kids are at a disadvantage. And so I'm saying, let's get our kids. To be in that spot where they have more of an advantage to learn and give our teachers the tools that they need so that. They are feeling confident on a daily basis to be able to know how to um, reach each child. So I don't see that it's replacing anything and there's no money. We still would be purchasing foundations. We do use that. That's that's within. The science of reading, that would take care of phonological awareness and maybe some decoding. Some phonical, some phonological awareness. The, but the rest of it, not so much. And so there's, there's a lot to it that we wouldn't, and to be able to have it. K through eight, so we have a really nice structure all the way through would be really helpful. And that's something that a lot of. Districts ha- don't even have the. Option to do. We do have that ability because we're working so closely with with the elementary schools that way. And we wanna make sure that there's. Synergy across and a and kind of a a stepping up throughout the system and there's consistency. And we don't similarly in the middle school, while we have done a lot of professional development in writing and we have seen some nice results. Uh, increases in our writing out outputs. For reading in particular, our um, teachers, as they do in the elementary school, use a lot of literature, which is great. It takes a ton of planning. And we still would use literature certainly, but um, there will be other resources that we'd be able to use that would help us target. Where kids are having struggles. As for um, STEM. You're right, um, that'll be adding programming. And that's what, that's what we've been doing. We've been trying to get STEM. Across the system for several years. We've, we've been able to be successful. In the middle school, high school to get some stabilization there. It's been hard to do. We know that when kids are learning in a hands-on inquiry-based way, that they're gaining, um, not just the the. Math prerequisite skills and science prerequisite skills, but they're learning that creativity, that ability to. You know, co- uh, all those, all those Cs of 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 critical thinking and so forth and collaboration as well. That's important. We have seen some significantly. Great gains. Socially. And we believe that we'll see them academically as well, but some soc- some significant social gains. In uh, the Jaffrey grade school with the implementation pre-K through five of the STEM work that we've done there. Credit to the teacher, Dorothy Meehan's amazing. Um, thank you, Dorothy. You're probably on, you're not on here right now, but just to say. Thank you for uh, taking your retirement back and and saying, I wanna do it another year. We gotta give them the resources and STEM equipment and materials are expensive.
So, second question. First one was really around the issue of if you come along on a new program.
Yeah.
You don't have new resources or additional resources to support that program. You have the existing resources doing a new program. They're gonna stop doing something. I don't know what it is, but they're gonna stop doing something. There's only so many hours in the day. The other thing was, I think I heard you say, I'm probably, I'm sure about this. That you're gonna take some uh, student services positions. Away from the uh, default. And then you're gonna turn around and say, well, we may have to hire them anyway. Is that what I heard you say?
So, well, that that's the truth. Anytime we we do any, what I would call. Pattern budgeting, you know, you have to take the money from somewhere. You it has to be line items. The easiest place to take it from wrapped in, so you're not doing like a ton of transfers. Is in the positions. That's the easiest location. The two locations to take them from that we've traditionally done have been in personnel as well as. Uh, out of district or private tuitions, you know, somewhere where there's a bulk of money that. You could, you could do those trend reductions. And so that's what we're talking about, trend reduction. Now, these, the idea, cause we had conversations about, hey, you haven't been able to fill these positions for the last two years or whatever. Maybe three. Um, so, yeah, we are, have been having difficulty to. Fill those. Now, the there's needs, there's a need there. And so if, for whatever reason, with out-of-district placement or an IEP says we need to meet whatever need, we're gonna have to do that. But right now, that's a, that's a way to remove the funds that we would want to trend reduce. No, no one's in those positions right now. So it's not. Those like no teacher would be, for instance, losing their. Theirs, their positions in this, in that.
You're, you're forecasting.
I'm forecasting.
Conservative forecast.
It's a very, it's a very conservative, but not.
Forecast of not a need, but a supply, that we have the need for the. Positions, but we don't have the supply of teachers. It's kind, cause these are unfilled positions.
Well, if if we, if we start to find, yeah, it's, the the money was taken, let's put it this way. The support is needed. The funds are taken out of places where there's short supply.
As a practical matter.
Yep.
You don't have a position unless it's posted. On a website, schools or wherever it goes to.
Sure.
Okay. And to do that, what you're saying is that um. You you've now created a new job. When in fact, you already had that job in the country place instead of really.
That's, that's, that would be correct, if we, if we need, if we end up needing them. If we don't need them, then.
Well, we needed him for two years.
Really, yeah.
Carl, did you have a question?
Uh, Charlie touched on the question I had written down. Will STEM replace another UA once going into the elementary school?
No.
So are you? Basically, you're inserting another. I've, I've experienced the structure of UAs and we have a certain amount of time it can do one way or another. So, uh, what are the UA teachers doing? Do they have more free time? Are they doing more assignments?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's actually an excellent question. I have. Let me formulate my thoughts so it's not a long answer. Jaffrey Grade School is the, is the. Model to look at. So. They added STEM. Uh, they were able to do that without adding a teacher. Um, we were able to reconfigure the staffing that was there. Pre-K through five. And I appreciate us talking, first of all, not calling them specials and. Calling them unified arts. So thank you for that, because I don't think that it's special to have STEM or special to have. Music and art and things, but those are necessities. You wanna call them necessities and we can call them that. Unified arts is respectful. So we have. We did add a unified arts. What that'll, what that enabled the school to do was completely shift their entire schedule. Regroup their s- um, staffing differently so that they could have. Um, concentrated time together to make collaborative decision-making. And to view their kids not only just as a single classroom or as a single grade level of of needing to support them. But be able to look across grade spans or grade levels and be able to say, how could we as a group support our kids better? And so, um, that only happens however with planning and and conversation that they. And and consistent or common planning time, they're able to do that when you have the number of UAs that you have. Uh, we were able to ex- ex- extend an amount of time there with the unified arts to give them a lot. Um, the time that they needed to really allow kids to create. And that has. Been, there has, there has been some good benefit. I haven't had a lot of, I haven't surveyed the staff on that, but just from having conversations, it's been going pretty well. I think at times it can be dicey having, you know, an hour long timeframe with um, some kids, art is loving it. Stems, yeah, I mean, the time flies by, cause kids are really enjoying that um, educational experience. But it, but it's not, like you said, it is about then utilizing that to be able to. Help the schedule function in a better way to allow teachers the time they need to do their. Work that they are, um, their primary role, I guess you could say, better. And so. It's a system. One teacher or one subject matter or one item. Impacts everything else. It's, you know, in kind of a domino effect way. Yeah.
Do you have the, I'm sorry.
Oh, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Do you have the splits from, um. I have roughly written, if I read the numbers right, dollar nineteen. Okay, and Jeffrey.
Yeah.
Dollar twenty-eight.
Dollars twenty-eight?
No.
No, it's twenty, twenty-four cents.
Oh, gee.
That's only for the budget. Pointed out, there's a teacher contract and some other things that are gonna drop on top of this, so you can easily add.
So. For those who are um, not here, there was a comment that was made about that, um, and you can see this on the screen right here, but there was a comment about. And there are other warrant articles that are likely to be put into. On the warrant that will also have tax impact. Specifically, one was stated, the the CBA. And we'll talk about that and show that in a little bit.
And I do think that that's, well, first of all. I haven't said much about this this time, but um, certainly.
And I do think that that's, well, first of all, I haven't said much about this this time, but, um, certainly, uh. Probably you've talked about here today, you listened to us and went back and addressed the priorities, and I understand that that was, you know, some of those decisions aren't easy. And, you know, with that, with the current proposed budget, we get, I think, our top priorities being the, the pre-K stays, right? And that's something I've already agreed to, um, or sort of classroom part two, which. Think we all think is one of those investments in the future that's gonna help, you know, it's a cost avoidance, right, for. Sending students out of district, uh, the high school math teacher, maintenance staff, you know, to get under the default. Which I, I don't think we knew if it was possible, right? Happy to be under there, but I think that is a good point. Then we look at these other things, it really is, it's not that we don't wanna do them, it's just taking a look at them, the whole context of what we're gonna be asking for. Right? It's like, we think we do everything, and I think if we go through the lists, we checked off, you know, just about all the priorities. I think there's some that were left off, but I'd say like seventy-five percent of them are on there, and I think the exceptions are what's left. So I'm, I'm just interested in what other people think about how, because there is a choice. We don't have to do all those things, right? It's not, we don't have to. Hold a special meeting. We could either, you know, some of those ones may be able to be handled in this budget, or we could decide not to do them. Um, and again, not that, not that we don't think they're good ideas, but maybe when, in a year that we're. Prioritizing and presenting a, a teacher contract that I hope is fair, and that's the priorities, maybe that's not the year for. And I'll just, I'll just throw that out there. And, and I think that in order to kind of make those decisions also. I know we got the budget, but certainly having. You know, that line on a budget that we had before, I think we have, uh, you know, the PDFs, but a cell file is a bit easier to kind of look through. So. I'm very encouraged by this, but I, but I still think there's kind of more discussion to be had for how we, how we handle a number of those items. Because that essentially, if we say we're gonna do all that, we'd be trying to address everything, which I think is great, but again, I. You know, looking at that other warrant article for the teacher contract and this, um.
What, what, um, just, just for clarification, the, if you were to do the public hearing and we're able to. Purchase some of those, the, the purchable, the purchasable items, right? Um, early, um. With that and the budget, it does, like you, it doesn't get everything. For instance, it doesn't get you that extra STEM teacher over at RMS. Um, you know, and there may be an equity conversation around that. Um, it doesn't, if you get the default, you know, you could say, hey, let's have the default and. That's our top priority if we were to go do that. Obviously, you could change the, the budget and say we wouldn't want that. The other, um, thing it doesn't get, that doesn't, we're not addressing, is the co-curricular. Um, stipends and so forth, like that's not in here. Um, so there are some things that we have left out, kind of. And, and they're part of, part of the reason for that, in the logic around the co-curricular segments, is it's tied with the CBA. Passing as well, so there is. We'll talk about that later.
So, if the CBA passes, that there is no, um, co-curricular funding available, correct?
Well, there's co-curricular funding available. Is there additional co-curricular funding available? We did not add.
We're talking about a default.
The, the default has what is currently offered in there, yep. But neither the default nor the proposed has the extra ninety-three thousand.
Two things. First, I always end up with a problem trying to explain to the residents of Jaffrey. Why our tax rate is so high, and it has to do with adequacy aid and has to do with, um. Property values, in other words, um, total property value to communities, and, uh. So it just. It's mind-boggling why we pick up such a big hit all the time.
It's a hard one, and again, Charlie, you know, was on that committee with you, and ultimately at the end, you know, the, the. You know, the agreement is what it is. It's based on the, the valuation and the enrollment. Which really, what, once you look at it, and I spent a lot of time thinking about this, makes it kind of equal. Not always, right? It changes, but, but then when you add on what another, and I believe the numbers may be a little outdated, but there's like. Two million dollars or an aid that Jaffrey gets, so you take, you take the, it's called twenty million, whatever, that, that, the. That the towns need to fund, right? You do the formula and it comes out, you know, it's not ten-ten, but let's say it's like eleven-nine or something like that, right? Maybe which pays more, let's, let's say for this case, right?
Yep.
So you have eleven-nine, right? And then the state adequacy aid comes in and bumps Jaffrey down. Two million and wrench down like five hundred thousand. So that's where you end up with that big gap. Uh, spent a lot of time thinking about it, and that's really, it's not so much the formula. We changed the formula. I still think that Jaffrey. Would pay less because the adequacy aid, they get millions more. So you're dividing it all up. And then Jaffrey gets aid, and then what Jaffrey has left to pay is significantly less. I don't know. I don't, I don't think that can be changed. I think.
Just in the last, the last two years, it flip-flopped, but it's flipped, it's flopped back. But the, the, you're correct on the adequacy aid, yes, but I mean, the formula.
The formula, but still, I bet you, the, the, it's, yeah, it's, it's flipped back, but not. I think the driving factor and the difference is still the adequacy aid, and I don't think there's anything we can do about that.
Yeah, but that's a big part of it. Well, if you look at A D M, our A D M doesn't change that much either. I think that most of it has to do. Besides adequacy, uh, it's also property values. It's what is total property value of, uh. Rains versus Jaffrey. What, what are we calling here?
Well, it's valuation.
Yeah, the valuation.
The range is increasing faster than Jaffrey, which has caused the range tax rate to go up faster than Jaffrey. That gap is widening there. The gap in the valuation is widening, and the.
Well, what happens is the town taxes don't go up, because they're spreading it across more property value. Alright, but the school tax goes up. That's what's hard to explain to people. Gee, how come our town tax doesn't go up as much? When our school tax does. What's that?
Our taxes actually went down for the town this year. And.
Your budget went up, though.
Budget went up.
See, so how do you do that? You do that by adding more property value. When you add more property value, it plugs into the formula and you want to pay more school tax.
And, yes, and we know the state, and then we know the state isn't paying a fair share. And that's, fight's gonna go on for a bit of time, even though the first, you know, this latest, um. Court case was won, they're now appealing, and there's a reason to appeal and to take more time and. Uh, have the legislature act on these sorts of things. It's a, it's a big system issue and, um, towns. There are, there are a variety of towns in the state of Hampshire that certainly get impacted worse. By the formulas that the state has, so it's un, it's unfortunate. The other thing that towns can do is they can, um, look at their community planning and future planning as to how we can build more taxable. Um, whether it be, you know, like, like Ringe is doing and having, you know, more building going on. Or what type of industries and so forth come in, what's, how, how do you strengthen your tax base is another way to help. Um, with the payment of that. But it takes a lot of visioning, often takes a lot of planning, takes a lot of forethought. Um, it takes years, so.
I think it's the only point I was trying to make, is this is a tax increase, but then again, it's in, it's not just in a vacuum. There's. The CBA that I think we're gonna discuss.
We'll, we'll get there.
You know, and, uh. I think so, certainly having a, a budget below default ensures that it'll probably pass, right? Because if you vote for the budget, they're gonna be spending less money. So anything below default is gonna pass, but I just wanna be sure we're doing our due diligence and.
I think that Ruben's far as a good point to teach us what he said about. State taxes and the state's participation. I think that's where we should be looking. I've heard a couple of comments about adequacy aid and about taxation. We could get into that discussion. There's more to be said about it, but if we do, we're sort of starting an argument. Among ourselves or our towns, when really the issue is with the state's choices on education. And, yeah, there's, there's, there's things to be discussed, including what we're discussing right now. What's our budget on education? The strategic design, are we still moving forward with that strategic design? Can you still believe that? And if we do, do we wanna pull back and slow down on that? Because, you know, things are expensive. I would remind people, though, that we have one of the lowest costs per student. In the region, far below some of our majoring school districts. Education is expensive. And the state is just not helping us in the way that it could.
I have a question. When you say lowest cost per student, is that for students enrolled or by students we have in the community? Because I think we overwhelmingly have a huge population that's homeschool or private schools right now.
Well, I guess what I would say to that, Jill, is that one of the things people don't realize is how much responsibility. Our schools take for private school, homeschool, and, um.
A back and forth, which you can do.
Oh, I was just asking a question.
No, it's fine. I'm, I'm not.
You're right, and that is just another thing that, that, and, and yes, I was talking about enrolled students.
And also, okay.
However, we are providing all these services, student services, sports, activities to the whole community. And you do it happily, but again, that's part of the costs, part of what drives our costs.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, um.
Um, I, I kind of agree with Chris, or I think. They've done a pretty good job, at least going back and looking. Um, but a big part of your proposal, as I see it, this is only my third shot at this, so. Just observing here and listening, is that. Big part of your reduction is spending money that we already have.
That's correct.
You know, about just short of four hundred and fifteen thousand on that list.
Yes.
So. I kind of view that as a, well, okay, we're gonna spend money we already have to reduce the budget, but it really didn't dig into the budget. So I'm gonna pose the question, because I know there was a lot of objection to how the last. Public meeting went on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we got over the summer. And that really wasn't. Accepted very well, that it didn't go back to the taxpayers. And it just got kind of landed in, never land to spend on facilities. It's kind of how it was described. Didn't have really a specific use, and there was a lot of people disgruntled about that. So what happens when you have this special aisle meeting, as you proposed? If you have one. And it gets flat out rejected. I think you, you need to kind of go back and look at the budget. Before you start trying to add this special meeting to it. Um, I think you're kind of taking something with positions and shifting stuff. But, you know, what about last year's budget? You can't do what you're doing now with last year's numbers. Your default budget's gonna come in higher regardless. And I guess, you know, you've got thirteen physicians advertised. Are they in the default budget? Or are they in the proposed budget? Or can they be removed entirely? I, I think you need to kind of go back and look at what you have as a budget rather than saying, well. The special meeting's great. If we can get this, we really only cut our budget by half. If you don't get it, you're screwed. In simple terms, you, you know, you're, you're defeating yourself by not looking at the starting point of this year's budget. Saying, do I really need to add this, or am I gonna cut? What I'm currently doing, I don't start here. You're just assuming that all this stuff is gonna be an expansion, like Charlie said. You're adding programming. Meet your goal, whatever that is. Not an educator, but. I'd be starting with last year's number and say, can we meet or earn even what I had last year?
Right, that's, that's exactly what our schools did. They flattened their budgets to almost, uh, zero increase. But staffing costs continue to increase, but.
On top of budget.
Go, go, go ahead, Tom. I just wanted to make sure that Ruben had Jan Solster to, to make his response.
Yep, we looked back through the budget. Every individual went back through their entire budget to see what could be done.
Anyway, appreciate, I'd like to say I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your observations. And. You know, I think that there are some people here who, you know, maybe feel the same way. I don't, that's what we have to decide. I know for myself, I've been looking at this for a long time now, and there's still a lot of unanswered questions as far as I'm concerned. You mentioned that this is only your third meeting, but the, the, the value, though, that I think you bring. Is that you've worked with these kind of things before. I can tell that by your knowledge, and I think that's. That's good. You're welcome, and welcome to, to serve the role that you're serving. You know, it's, it's important. I think we're, we're trying to do the same as the best we can.
Um, I still, um, want to keep with my motion-ish thing. Ruben, do we have, do we have any access to the screen? Um, I sent you a calendar. If you remember opening up the document. Um, if we decide to do a public hearing, if we decide to move forward, we have a very tight timeframe. And a lot of complicated days coming into it, and so I put up. Um, or I shared with Ruben the actual dates that we currently have for school board, including budget hearings. And, um, when we're having, like, we're not gonna see each other again until January eighth. I don't know if people realize that. That we're not even scheduled to do anything together until then, and so we actually need to make the decision now how to move forward. Because a supervisor, the checklist needs to have two weeks to post any public hearing. We can't just say, oh, next week we'll do this. We have to have this really thought out. Um, so, um, is it?
Well, let me, uh.
What, do you have a point of order or something?
No.
Okay. Is that okay, Liz?
What?
The, are you talking about timing? Are you trying to get the public hearing before the budget?
No. Not before the budget here. Before a deliberative session.
Before a deliberative session.
Before a deliberative session, it's gonna be very hard to do.
Go into a budget. Budget approved. You can't change it, okay? It doesn't make any difference what time this, um. Public hearing is held for the unexpendable.
As long as it's before the end of the fiscal year. You just go into the budget, the knowledge that.
We need to get it done early enough so that I'm, put into getting purchase orders for all this, uh, uh. Compacts and tractors and everything else in there that's gonna require some purchase orders. And they turn around time because the way Perry does the books, unless, um. We've actually been sent something, that we can send them a money purchase order, but unless they send something back to us. We can't claim that this year, so it's gotta be, she's gotta receive something, either a tractor or compact or something. we can't claim that this year. So it's gotta be, she's gotta receive something, either a tractor or a compact or something. So, so that's to me is the guiding timeline, is, is the time line that we need to get the purchase orders in place to buy the equipment.
So are you, let me, let me get this straight, is any, and what are, so we would need actual invoices from things like the Chromebook company? Saying this is how much all the Chromebooks exactly are gonna cost before we can say, yes, we can lose these spots?
Yes.
So how is this even a conversation? That's, that simply wouldn't be possible.
Absolutely it is. You can, you can send a purchase order out in February. All right, and given uh.
I think, I, I think what Charlie, the, the point I, I think Charlie's trying to make is that the, the real deadline here is that these items be invoiced before the end of the fiscal year. There certainly would be nice to know before the budget season whether they're gonna be covered or not, but I don't know. And, and my thought, if we want it in the budget, then we should figure out a way to either fit it in the budget or raise it accordingly. The other thing is that it's not a special meeting, so it doesn't require the supervisor of the checklist. I don't believe it's just a public hearing.
And I do think this sort of the purposes of the budget here, that not knowing whether or not the items that we're talking about, like Chromebooks, which we know are needed for testing. If those are not gonna be, if they're up in the air as potentially not available, how do you decide what you're gonna support in the budget?
Yeah, I think if there's anything that needs
the blue to be, I'm finding my right spot. The blue asterisks. So a public hearing could happen on the day of the budget hearing. So this is our calendar here. I was, I thought by a public hearing, you'd have to have the full voting body posted. That's not the case. Okay, so we could get the information feasibly for finances for our January eighth meeting. And then decide if we want to include a public hearing on the eleventh for our budget hearing, is that?
I think you gotta post the uh public hearing a little bit.
Yeah, we could uh, we, we, we need, usually we need about two weeks. To make it all happen.
But we could have a public hearing in here to decide it, not, not the town.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's not a town meeting.
Right.
Okay.
And, and if we have a, honestly, if we have a um public hearing, we could also double up with a public hearing on accepting some revenue as well. That, you know, we, we, we get.
So then getting information for the eighth, our regular meeting on the eighth, to propose a public hearing for the twenty second would make sense. That's feasible?
I think the only thing that is difficult out of that, I think all those numbers are very easy to get, except for um, an exact number on the reading curriculum, because they have, they have uh two to three of them. I have all the numbers for all of them. But which one they're going to go forward and choose, that still needs to take place. They're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go and, and like pilot a bunch of different um plans. The, there, there are, some are just better than others. Um, and so we kind of narrowed it down to two and then made those decisions. But you might need, for that specific item, need probably um you know, a little more time in January. I just wanted to give you a maximum cost. That was my point here. Again, I think if, if we're to do that, we really need to confirm and answer like, if I say out of the thirty-one million dollars that we're proposing in the budget, there isn't three hundred thousand dollars we can find. If the answer is absolutely not, we've already cut things back, then, you know, then that's why I think we have the decision about whether we do it. Um, or whether we have the the public hearing for it or decide, you know, maybe not to do it this year. The extra, the money that we give back is, is typically in either, again. If a, if a learner doesn't go to an out of district placement.
Right.
And we have two hundred thousand dollars suddenly left, all right? So that gets returned. Or if we haven't been able to hire specific roles, um, then that money goes back. It's not that that money wasn't allotted to something.
Yeah, I know.
It's not something like, oh, um, yeah, we have this four hundred thousand dollars somewhere.
No, I'm understood.
To, to say that.
Given the fact that we have like ten open positions, so is there
But if, and, but if those positions, but you want those positions.
Yes, absolutely.
My point, so, and so I would, in, in, in the budget situation, where would I, in order to take that four hundred fifty or four hundred thousand dollars, I'd have to take it out of either those positions. Like, we've already done within student services, right? Um, and then have to try to still go and get them, and that's, that's a, you know, it's not the best practice. Or you have to take it out of a zillion different lines, which means that we're going to be doing budget transfers like crazy. So you'll need another person to even deal with all the business office stuff on them. It's just like, we don't have, the, the schools aren't overflowing with um funds for uh, you know, your supplies and so forth. I mean, I guess, you know, we do purchase the supplies for all people who come into the schools. Um, we made a decision several years ago, that is, that is something. But even if we didn't do that, you're not, you're what, you're saving another thirty thousand, twenty thousand maybe at tops?
You're talking about the?
Like pens, pencils, notebooks, all that kind of stuff, yeah. So it's not getting you to those numbers. And so while at the end of a year, when in retrospect you can say, oh, we have the money to do that. Um, one, we typically don't have the spending power, the buying power along that entire year to do that. So it was a cash flow issue. Um, and if we're too tight cash, like we saw two years ago, we, we were down to a really, really bad spot toward the end of the year as a result of, of how things were going. I think we, but uh, we were able to pull it off due to revenue coming in. But once all said and done, all the revenue comes in, we got more revenue that year than we had anticipated and so forth. Yeah, we were able to give something back. And so at the end of the year, sometimes you do know that, oh, we could have done that. But, or if you hire, let's say you hire all your people, but, but maybe you hired them below what was budgeted. Then you would have, you know, funds. That's where the excess money comes from. It doesn't come from, you know, people not purchasing supplies and stuff like that, or elect, sometimes you get lucky with electricity. We did cut a hundred thousand dollars out of, out of the, since that Saturday, out of electricity and um, not electricity, sorry, propane and biomass. Biomass, because we did get better numbers from the companies that call us back.
When I was in the business world, my boss would take one look at this and say, hey, look, you're looking at a one point two percent difference. Manage it. Make it happen. I want everything on your list and I want it for the dollar. But this is academia. Folks, academia is a lot different. That's one thing I have to say. Second thing I have to say is that I don't think we're getting any place right now. We haven't changed any numbers. We danced around the thing. So my suggestion is go ahead with what we have. And then whether or not the excess comes out of the uh get it next up.
Unassigned fund balance retention.
Comes out, we have to, we have to discussion when we talk about a public hearing. And then, and then during the public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear input from the public. And when we go in there, we should have an open mind. So if the public is telling us, don't do it, then we need to place some weight on that. We just can't walk in and say, hey, I was a white bitch. Therefore, I can determine what I want to do. We need to do it. We need to listen to the people. Anyway. Can we move on? Sorry, Jimmy.
What would the board like to do?
I wanna stand up. Sorry. I, I need to.
Yep.
Two hours. The bed of my brain. Well, we can keep talking. I just need to stand.
Okay, so we have a, a motion, sort of a motion from Lisa. Char, Charlie pointed out there were some problems with that way that motion was formulated. Ruben, what would you, what are you asking us to do tonight, you're into this?
Well. I, I think that those items that I'm presenting are needed. I wouldn't be putting them up there and having these conversations if I didn't think that they were, or if these were not brought to me from the educators in our system that said, these are what, these are the things we need. Or the facilities director about a tractor. Technology, we know the ramifications of not keeping up with it. That would be just a bad mistake and we don't want to do that again. The so what I'd like, regardless of which, you know, where the funds come from, although I think that the prudent thing to do is use the unassigned fund balance, and if we have surplus later on, you actually can go back in there. It doesn't work the other way around, like waiting till the end and trying to get this stuff done. It, it's not, you're the benefit, you lose benefit, plus it's not, it's not great for a lot of reasons. So I, I would want a commitment, ideally, to say, yeah, we can go with this lower um, budget number. Um, cause, cause there was a request to put some things together that we could pre-purchase during the last meeting. That's what we've done. Um, and we're, we're committed to getting those items. Within, within, you know, not to exceed perhaps what I've presented or something of that nature. How, we can discuss how to go about doing that. But that there, there's a commitment to doing that. I would, I would like that. Otherwise, I think we gotta put the money back into the budget, and we have a default budget lower, I suppose, but that doesn't guarantee us getting there either. And that doesn't accomplish other things that the board had wanted to do.
Good, thank you.
I mean, discussion?
Yeah. What would the board like to do?
Well, from just my perspective, I know we've got a motion on the table, so I don't know whether we want to.
Well, it hasn't been seconded yet, right?
Yeah, but it's still sitting there.
Yes.
You, you have for a second. If nobody seconds it, then we move on. Anyway, um need to wait for Lisa to, to our motion or
or reform. You want to restate your motion, just so if there's anyone?
I don't know that this would need a motion, but I would like to um, ask the superintendent to pursue hard numbers for the January eighth meeting. To see if we want to pursue a public hearing. We'll see what the public, what has to say on it.
Okay, I'll second that.
I'm sorry, who said, who said they said?
Okay, and so I'm not sure I understand the motion. I apologize. It's not your fault.
Rephrase. So, and I, and I begin by, I'm not sure this needs a motion. I'm recommending that the superintendent come back um, for our January eighth meeting with hard numbers to go forward with yeah, a public hearing on the unassigned fund balance. I don't know if that has to do with the blue areas at all. If you can just do the blue areas, just do the blue areas. I don't think that needs the board approval. But those red asterisks need a public hearing. What I'm hearing is that we don't want to give a general amount to that and say up to and including this amount of money.
You can have a not to, you can have a not to exceed number.
Exactly. So if we have a not to exceed number, great, but if it needs to be far more specific, let's try and get as close to that as possible. So I'm recommending that the superintendent get us the hard numbers that would need to be taken from the unassigned fund balance to reach that three hundred and forty-two thousand, whatever.
Okay, so are you then, you, you've made a motion. You're saying you want to make that a recommendation now instead of the motion?
I think it makes sense as a recommendation, not a motion.
Okay, so you want to withdraw your, so it's kind of a problem.
I'm asking Kerry for you. Do we need specific numbers to part like that? Like, which means you'd have to have the, you know, basically the quote, something that you're gonna get invoiced on, or can we do a not to exceed amount?
Yes, you, you've withdrawn your motion, is that?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion and accept the draft for article two. I'll second.
All right, so Charlie, give me a motion. Chris, second it.
This, before you vote on the motion, Kerry did indicate that you could do a not to exceed. Getting exact dollar sense is very difficult.
Right. Kind of productive, most likely.
Yep.
All right, so this, we have a motion to adopt article two, and that's second. Does this address your concern, Superintendent Duncan?
This, I, I think that these numbers work and gives the school district what it needs. Um, again, so as long as we were able to purchase those other items.
So I'm hesitant to say yes to this right now without, I mean.
It would be a mistake not to get the reading curriculum. It would be obviously functionally very difficult to not do the technology. Yeah.
And to, to say yes to thirty-one, seven, seven, three in the assumption that we'll be able to get these things another way.
In, in years past, just to, just to remind the board in years past, this is not, this is not an uncommon practice. This is a practice that has been done in the past, not necessarily with the unassigned fund balance. But there was a statement that, and we're going to do this, we're going to purchase this. So it was, you know, not just say, well, we'll see what happens, type of thing.
You're right.
That's, that's happened. It's, we're kind of in that flow, you know, of doing that year after year to some degree.
This doesn't improve that. So all those things, nevertheless, it's still going to be purchased. Because we can't use, because we're talking about not using the funds this year.
Three or two different issues. One is the budget that the superintendent submitted for our review tonight, which is right up there, article two. And the other is the withdrawal of the uh, unassigned fund balance, which is done after a public hearing. So we can't even decide to do it until after we have a public hearing. Because we're not supposed to be biased before we go in and take care of the public. So if we sit here tonight and say, yeah, we're gonna do this to the um unreserved fund, okay? We've already shown our bias towards something, and why bother having a um public hearing? So I think the appropriate thing to do is to pass this to, to decide whether we're gonna have a public hearing, to have the public hearing, take the input of the public, and then to decide what and how much is removed from uh, the unassigned reserve fund. That to me would be the right procedure.
Well, it would certainly be an effective, it would certainly have an effect, but I wouldn't agree that it's necessarily the right thing to do. I think that it is legitimate and reasonable to express an intent. That doesn't mean that you don't listen to the public and that you don't, in a public hearing, take input. But if we sit here and say, well, in a sense, you could take some of the conversation we've had as an indication against as a, as a predilection or having already decided against buying these things, in which case, to vote for this now means that you're voting. To go forward with a budget that doesn't include.
No, you're saying that. No, you're saying.
Well, you, you, you said the opposite a minute ago.
Not. All I said was you have to have an open mind and go to a public hearing. All I say. Doesn't mean I'm gonna vote for it or I'm gonna vote against it. It's not.
A, a public hearing in general is to notify people what you're doing. You can, you can take feedback and so forth and hear people's stuff, but it is for the purpose of notifying your intent or even notifying the action that you're going to do. That's what the public hearing is legally for.
Yeah, and I think with the public hearing, as long as you're within it, when you're given the information identifying that this, why you're doing it like this to help lower the proposed budget that's then, that we approved on whatever day, I think it's fine. Because the next ones, I mean, so unless I'm getting it wrong, we have the public hearing, then we decide to use the assigned funds, right? It's not ultimately up to. It's not a warrant article, a second.
It's not a second warrant article, no. You have the right to do that. You've, you've been elected officials. You have the right to move forward.
Still get to get the other things.
Yep.
If, if you have the lines to cover that.
Yep. Regardless, it's just up to us.
Yeah.
Tell the public. Be that in public.
So there are three different things.
There, that's sort of chartered some ideas, right?
There are, there are two separate things, but they are connected.
Yes.
The main thing that the board needs to do is the board needs to decide on a number. And if you've heard, you've heard what I've had to say and what I suggest. And what I think would be good to move forward. Again, it's not a budget. I mean, I, we lose it, we lose an incredible amount in this, in this budget right here. But we're keeping the priorities close to the classroom. And all those items, you know, with the exception of a tractor, but that, although that's used for the kids, not, not for them to play on, but you know, to make sure things are in good order. Everything else is very closely related to um academics and the classroom and the student well-being.
John.
Yes.
Hi, um, Crawford. Uh, the warrant article is just about dollars. There's no tractor in the article. It doesn't matter. You're just voting on money amount. If this is the warrant article as it stands, so the intent of being able to purchase these other things is a separate issue.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's just a question of the dollars right now. Is that correct? Good.
Mr. Cameron, you have the motion. A second. Remove the question.
Okay, there is no further discussion.
I think John would like this.
You know, I, I agree with the call. I think it's two separate issues, but I think this board needs to be prepared that you know, a hundred people show up at that special meeting and say, we don't want you to do that. Nobody's done, especially. You have to take that into consideration. It's not a warrant article, but you we need to be prepared for an audience that says no. And take that into consideration when you make a decision to spend it, as it might. It might come back. I should just move for thought.
Okay, well, thank you. Both for your thumbs. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
I've been.
How can we go to what?
CBA.
Okay.
Take the opportunity to let a couple just answer the note.
Are you? Oops, are you leaving?
I'm not gonna come back after, I, I shouldn't be a part of this, the next conversation.
Oh, okay.
Because my daughter's science.
Right.
Um, so I'm gonna leave, but I also, it's right at the end of the week, so I'm gonna take the opportunity to.
Okay.
So thank you.
Very good. Thank you for coming and for being here, Thomas.
Thanks for getting.
Have a good night.
All right, so the next items, action item on our agenda is the ratification of the proposed J R E A cooperative bargaining agreement.
Okay. So this fall, the representatives from the school board, as well as some of the administration was involved in bargaining with the um J R E A leadership and a select groups of individuals that were part of that team. And the, there, they came to a tentative agreement, which has been ratified by the J R E A. So tonight, we would need to also, the board needs to accept moving forward with this and putting this on a warrant article. So ratifying this, saying that we agree, this is what we want to move forward with. And the tentative agreement is a three-year tentative agreement or agreement. These are the items that have changed or added. Um, I'll, where it says amend, it means that there was language there before, where it says add or subtract, you know, something that, that means that it's either taken out or, or added into. So there was six, seven, one. What we had, we already had a paid parental leave clause in there. And it was for two weeks or ten days to, to finish school weeks. And that was increased to four. Um, Ford felt that this was something that was beneficial to have in his contract. And so they agreed there. Um, section eight, two, one. This, there was this and another section, I believe, as well, sixteen dash two. Yep, there it is. That talked about just some approval processes. When those approval processes need to happen and who's allowed to approve those processes. So there doesn't necessarily need to be just one person. It can be one person and, you know, or in those designated uh, within fifteen business days. Um, so it's just a process change. This was a more substantive change. Um, this is one where option three A, which is in green, that was a dental plan, um, that has been shifted to the one S, which is in that third column there. There you can see the differences in some of those boxes. The primary difference is being the, the plan year maximum per person on the bottom, and then also the addition of orthodontic lifetime maximum, which didn't exist in our current plan. It was a fairly low cost item, relatively speaking, so it was, it was good to put in there for everyone. All right. Um, section eight dash four point one through four point five, this is the co-curricular stipends. And so what happened here was that second, that someone's trying to get in apparently. It was that the co-curricular stipend language that's in the CBA currently, which governs how much people get paid for any clubs, co-curriculars or um coaches. Um, that has been removed from the J R E C B A if this were to pass. Um, allowing the board more flexibility with how to move forward. There is some language in there that, however, does indicate that it's, there needs to be input from both the um administration and the association. Um. May require nurses to work more days, up to seventeen days in addition. Um, a lot of that has to do with summer school or other things that need to be done during the summer prior to school. Um, overnight trips, there are a couple overnight trips that we have where teachers go and they spend whether it be a day or, or one night, two nights, three nights. Um, there, and so this is saying there's a heightened responsibility during that timeframe. So we're going to acknowledge that, that a person would get a hundred fifty as a stipend per overnight on a trip. For those trips. Uh, and if there are, we don't have a lot of trips like this, but if there were others, we could negotiate it. Um, section ten, three. Um, one of the members of the committee really likes the word telegram and wanted to keep that in there, but we don't seem to use telegrams any longer. And so that was just a language change. Eleven, one, this is relative to new hires. So uh, we have seen a need or there's been a need that has been conveyed to um for extra support for people coming in, better onboarding for individuals coming into the organization. And so we already have two more days than the regular contract, but this would extend it to four days in contract. And then the length of day. Uh, the length of day actually is now, this is tied with um, that second bullet point. First of all, the length of day we put in there as um what it currently is, we, we named it what it is. Um, so seven point five hours. Now, actually, what ended up happening was we found through this process that the elementaries were not at seven point five hours. They were at seven point I think two, five hours is what it was. And so this brings the elementaries up to where the middle high school is. But it also brings up in that first bullet point um, the number of minutes spent in, on student time, the students' day um, to where the middle school, high school is as well. Lots of language about exceptions to this.
Practically, how does that affect the students' day? Talked about this one.
Doesn't practically um affect, well, doesn't affect the students' day here at all. And it would, it would give twenty minutes more for the elementaries and in educational classes. So if you, for instance, if you had let's say we, we put it in reading, right? So, which is a logical place because we'll be getting new curriculum and so.
As far as like the length, is the length of day, like, will the day be starting sooner?
That we have to talk over with our bus company. Would, do I think practically it will make much of a change? No, because we wait for a long time for the buses to come at Ringe, for instance, and, and also in Jaffrey. So it might actually just keep us where we currently, yeah, yeah. I don't see that, but we still will have to have some planning with the bus company. They're gonna be a large determiner of how we go about doing.
But like as far as parents, they shouldn't expect to be dropped when it's off a half hour.
The, we do not, and it is not our intent to start the day earlier for elementary. But not that, not a half hour earlier. What you will get, however, is approximately fifty to sixty hours more of instruction. Um, of some, whether it be reading or STEM or something of that nature. These are salary related language and scale adjustments, basically the um through the many years of negotiating in this district. And we've done it once since I've been here, I think the first contract that we negotiated, but I guess it had been going on for quite some time. Um, and some contracts passing, some not passing, a lot of, a lot of things happening. But individuals who have been here a long time in the district have seen a, a situation where there are steps, like do, they get increases, but by doing so with a reduction of steps to the scale, they go backwards in their steps. And so that complicates matters if people were to, if you were to hire and bring people in higher than them with the same level of experience. So this is record, this is basically saying, you know, we, for those individuals and there are in a section of this contract or this, this agreement, though they're actually named. There are specific individuals who were here during the time of these changes where in the last, the, what we would agree upon in the second two years of this contract, that they would get double steps. Um, for that purpose, which would take care of that. What happened during that last, well, three negotiations over again, again. That's the, that's the idea. The contract scales would be like this. So you'll, you'll see the language, uh, the draft language of the CBA and momentarily. So you see a four point five five percent increase the first year. A four point five eight salary increase the second year and a four point one seven the third year. Um, the way we wanted to handle this was to keep things, some school, a lot of schools, you're gonna see this in the papers a lot. You're gonna see school districts in the area going up nine, ten, twelve percent next year. Um, once, one school system about quite a bit smaller than us is putting a CBA um warrant article for nine hundred thousand on there because of needing to catch up, can't hire people, that sort of stuff. We're in a slightly better position because of some, we've had some good negotiations along the way. Um, made some smart decisions, some of them tied to what we talked about earlier with the health insurance. Um, this keeps things more consistent as opposed to these massive jumps and then dropping down to two percents and stuff like that. Um, again, you're gonna see places around the area who have been opened up negotiations early. Um, just to try to catch up to different places and they're, they're gonna be huge. This is not this is, this is not um a small amount. But it is very, you know, much in the um streamline of how things are going. Um, and it's uh we try to, like I said, keep it, keep it even over the years as opposed to having big spikes.
Well, this have us, I guess, relative to, we don't know, right? Because other districts are in negotiations and stuff, but what do you think our position is?
Well, we've been a very good, we've been in a very good position because, as you know, when we did the negotiations around several, like nine years ago, around the health insurance, which we put that money and reinvested it into the bottom of the scale. And so that we would raise our um our salaries at the beginning for hiring purposes and, and just because we were at that time, actually the lowest in the region by about four thousand dollars. We are now closer to the highest starting salary. We are not like the highest at the end or anything like that, but um by maybe two or three thousand in some places, four to five thousand in other places, because they've taken different tactics. So we will, I, I would imagine that people who are negotiating much higher percentages right now are looking to catch up at the beginning of things if possible. Um. So I, I would see that we're probably gonna be even level with them. Um, if they, if they are able to pass their new negotiations, which if they don't, they're not gonna be hired, hiring people. That's just the reality. Then that's what's happening right now. Um, the last thing that was in this was an MOA. Which is a forward-thinking group. Our, our con- concept that a group would get together, people from the administration and the school board, people who are in the uh, association. Talking about, let's look at our, our, how we use time. Let's look at how we do things for both adults and the learners in our system. We live in an ever-changing world where so many jobs are more flexible, you're able to do things in a lot of different ways. Our kids' lives are um not as linear as what perhaps we've had in the, you know, in the last twenty, thirty years. And society is shifting and economics and the workforce is shifting fast. And we have to have a system that also adapts as that takes place. Perhaps not as robust adaptation to say like a. Perhaps not as robust adaptation to say like a typical, you know. Uh, business of a public school. Um, but we have to have more flexibility for everyone to be successful, and that's the idea there. This is the draft warrant article.
So just because I'm, you know, the MOA doesn't have to be mentioned at all in a warrant article, that's just kind of a.
The MOA is not in the warrant article, it's part of the um tentative agreement right now. Um, and it gives us a timeframe to have these meetings and have these conversations and bring information back as suggestions later on.
That MOA is kind of, anything including up to doing like a H ninety schedule. Just like you, you get every other Friday off or anything.
Anything that has to do with. Anything to do with time, yep, anything that you have time and also how in, how instruction can be done differently because they're tied, they're, they're tied to each other. So you can see down there at the bottom, the tax impact. You can also, um, at this point in time, what I would be asking for is the board to say. Yep, I approve this, move forward with this and we're gonna put this on the warrant.
Any questions for Ruben? Any comments?
Thank for Indian for his leaderships for this whole process. I wasn't there. Several times ago, I wasn't there, but it wasn't that, until I was there. I saw the other two board members. Great cultural job. Yes, that's the right word, working with the teachers, trying to come up with something that was. Good compromise, something that benefited both the school and benefited teachers as well. As we know, they were faced with a three year contract where even um. Social Security got a cost of living increase, okay, but all they got was what was in the contract, so. Anyway, Ruben did a good job.
Thank you.
I'd like to kind of echo that as well and um. Just think that. You know, in conjunction with what we talked about there, this is in line with, I think, what our, what our board is showing me that, you know, those things that are right. Our staff, right, we want to keep our staff, we realize those are. Me anyways, I'll speak for myself, that's our most important priority is having our, keeping our good teachers. Um, that our kids can learn, that's ultimately what this is all about. It's all everything certain, do support it, not be getting into that, but I think that um. You know, this is, to me, hopefully a fair, fair contract that the teachers um, teachers. Employ here, you know, for the next three years and beyond, so. Appreciate the team that did work on that.
Thank you, Tom. But that's all right. We have a heck of an agenda tonight, um.
I'll make a motion to approve the. Article three. That's right, a second.
Okay, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Nathan. If there's no further discussion. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose? Okay. But that passed to six zero. Thank you, Jim. And uh. Now we're onto the CTE application process for an update.
Okay, so let me speed this one way up. Public safety is, um, it's a, it's a broad topic, but it involves um, like. Police, fire, um. Uh, forensics, anything of that nature, so it's, it's a high science field, but it's really for your um. To support your, the, the, the safety of your pub, public, the jobs that kind of fall in line with, with that sort of thing, maybe law a little bit as well sometimes.
I was very foundational, obviously. I just, whenever I looked it up, like, couldn't really find anything just because it was so broad.
It's a little broad, it's a little broad, we would, we would narrow it down to like fire science and forensics and, you know, so things that would be a little bit. More tightly related to what our community's values are, but.
Would E O T fall within?
Yes.
That as well?
Yes.
Any basic courses that can be taken.
Think so. Okay, um. This is, well, to speed this up, I think the best thing to do would be just to say, we've, we've, we've um. Talked a lot about this, we've shown a lot of different types of uh pictures and so forth. And so the one that they're focusing, the uh, the, we're focusing on right now is the model that. Um, slightly renovate some of the science rooms upstairs for forensics and things of that nature. As well as building out new in the front for the, each of the four areas of culinary arts. Um, cosmetology, both of those will be closer to the Pratt area. Um, and forward facing to the community, so parking could be used and come that way. And then the ones that kind of get tucked back here, close on this side would be um. The current construction trades. That we already have, but in a different facility, that place would be taken down uh to make this fit. And then also the public safety, which would connect. Um, there are some other kind of pieces to that where, because we're not talking two stories on everything. Um, we're talking one story actually for the cosmetology and the culinary arts. Um, however, on the rooftop areas, looking at some uh greenhouse type. Of fixtures so that some of that food that you would be able to grow in that capacity would be able to be used within the culinary arts.
You're just sweet talking.
I am, I, I, I am looking at you and no one else, um, but no, that I just saw those today. Um, with that type of thought process. And being able to not right off the bat, but maybe in future years, be able to use the rooftops of these other places that are um. Would be about the same height, like a one and a half story type of area for. Some gardens and things of that nature that could be utilized for the science rooms because they can actually like. Perhaps take a window or, or walk out onto that area for an outdoor classroom. But that wouldn't necessarily be built into that, it's not part of the scope, it's just something that could happen. Um, what I really, really need is a motion for the board to want to continue to, um, that you support the application. Moving forward and that you um want to continue with the um going toward this CTE project.
Okay, so this is a big one. Some people have been closer to what's going on than I was, but uh. A bad question.
Yeah, I'll just comment, I've been, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I think that's the first one. And I think that the firms that the nation showed. Think they've met all their commitments, their deadlines, and we've been progressing this as planned, so. Just they don't see any reason why we wouldn't continue the process at this point, we're fairly heavily invested. Time and we have spent some planning, so. Given the chance to get this seventy five percent funding, I think we should continue with it, it's your reason not to.
Okay, thanks, James.
No, that's, I was just asked to ask if there was still, the funding was still in place, but he answered that question.
Right, there are a lot of unanswered questions, so um. When we uh, we'll get to the application stage, you get.
Right. What happens if we don't? We don't have to go, we don't have to front money to go completely, okay.
All right, so Chris has made a motion and. Charlie, a second, do you? Is any, any other discussion, please?
Did you just put that up?
That is.
I haven't seen this yet.
A, a three D version of kind of the idea that we were discussing, so I didn't make it up, that was the. Greenhouse area, anyway, um. That's kind of the idea, so you'd have the construction trades, the public safety. Um, and go, there would be some renovation in here, because some of the public safety, the public safety is kind of small. Because you'd utilize current space a little bit. And then your cosmetology and your culinary arts, culinary arts is larger because the equipment and the. Space you need to do that, so it was a lot bigger as well, but um. And then it's close to here, here's your walkway, you'd have this, there's the Pratt, right? So you'd have. Um, the ability to kind of have community coming in on a regular basis into that area. Into this entry and this way.
And the current walkway into the high school runs.
The current walkway is pretty much this, right there, but that would all be.
Enclosed.
Enclosed, yep.
Although entry would still be there, but it would be in, in closed time.
And the, this could change, but the concept is there. Certainly not great details from inside, there's still a lot of work to do relative to that. Currently, they're trying to make sure that they're getting all, like I said, I think I told you earlier, all the supplies and all the equipment and so forth, getting all those lists done and how much that would cost. All that's, if we were to be approved, we would be up for seventy five cents on the dollar.
This is such an important, potentially important budget for our community as we think about not just our current. Students are the students who are enrolled in our schools, that the kids who are homeschooled, the kids who go charter schools and private schools. Who want to um access this level of education, it would be available. It could be a gigantic benefit to our community to have these students come out, ready to go, ready to start their, their life as adults with. Degrees or, or certificates. I'm all for this.
Thank you, Christine. So if there are no other questions, then I would. Called, called the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? No, so that carries six zero. All right, well, thank you, Ruben, got us through a couple of big items, right? Uh, on board committee updates, I would just ask if anybody has anything. Well, significant, please bring it forward now.
Yes, I do not have any time critical. Due to items, so um Thursday's finance committee.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other committee updates that anyone?
We're in a meeting on education, um, I had to leave promptly at a certain time, so we skipped the uh. High school one. But uh, the grade schools have a lot going on and um. It seems that a lot of the programs that we've put into place, like along the way. Charlie, you weren't there, but they've had a lot of data for us, which was really good to see. So um, there are a lot of things in the grade schools right now with the M T S S B. That are moving forward, that were really cool, and you could see the growth that is showing up in the kids. And how the programs are working well, and hopefully it can just continue up and um. Move into the middle of nice things.
That, thank you for that update and I'm not looking to drag things out, but someone could just tell us once again. M T S S B stands for.
Behavior system of support.
Stick a behavior program to help them move along.
I have a copy of the presentation, I could probably forward it along, it's pretty impressive. The pictures are nice.
The other really cool thing is that schools, the elementary schools are working together so nicely and. Where they used to be like Jaffe Grade, Ringe Memorial. There's so much more of a together kind of community between the two of them now, it's just really, really neat to see, they even. Go back and forth, some teachers shadow teachers at RMS, they touch out teachers at GTS. There's a lot of things that's just kind of happening between the schools that was. It's amazing, and the um, the two schools are working really well together.
Having them aligned keeps it, I remember when I was in middle school. Um, you'd have students like, well, you know, I went to RMS, I didn't have to.
That's why we need this reading curriculum, because the teachers. Are amazing and they're creating it, but what JGS is creating could be potentially different than what RMS is creating. And, yeah.
We saw that even in the preschool, the pre K data. That you saw one school that had, I mean, in, in your kind of early kindergarten, you know, um, assessment. From those kids who were in pre K, you saw one school have stronger earlier literacy. Um, skills in a sense, and then, and the other one had actually early, better early mathematical, you know, skills, so. And the co- collaboration together, of course, is to help them, you know, to become stronger, but it does matter.
Bringing them back together in the middle school. For six, seven, eighth grade teachers, it's just gonna be so much smoother and, and even for the kids to not be like. You're from Ringe, what did you do over there? You know, it just kind of makes it a little bit smoother and really nice, so it was very cool.
Awesome.
Yeah.
We did have a facilities meeting today, um, got some updates on. Projects. Um, we learned that A track still is. During the list phase, but we still, there's still work that needs to be done. There's some questions about whether or not we've accurately entered the warranty timeframe. And um, aside from that, a lot of good work is, is happening and things seem to be running smoothly.
Yes, exactly. Sandy led, led us through a very well. Formed agenda and um. Was, it was a good meeting, and uh, as, as you said, Christine, the H V A C were. They're working on facilities group, we're trying to provide the support because we know that. This is a major purchase, you think it's going well, but we want to see it finish well as well.
I have a question, um, I was at a game the other day and I saw. Some mats on the stage, is that all cleared up? Between the mat, or I don't know, can I ask her a question?
That's part of my public comment, so.
John, can Sandy answer?
Yes, Sandy.
So in regards to the mats, the new mats are in, so they've been installed on the stage. And we, I don't believe they got to them today, put them on the back wall. So the temporary ones are still up on the back wall, um, but we do have the new mats and I'm hoping to have those installed. Um, fairly quickly, we were dealing with a lot of building issues today. Um, so my team wasn't able to um get to that back wall today, we have a window. That we can do that and install um when the kids aren't in there.
Sorry, I just wasn't able to go today, so I couldn't see, but I saw that.
The stage is done and it looks fantastic, please, um. Don't go tonight, because I just asked my guy to lock that up for us, um, so the Pratt is secured, but please take a look at it.
All right, and then the other side has temporary stuff, but.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, very good, I think we're ready for our second section of public comments, of the comments.
Um, all right, I'll st- I'll start, um, Corey Manley, I'm Jaffrey, um. I am more or less here for um athletic stuff, um. Some of you may have gotten an email from me earlier this week, or maybe that was last week, last week maybe. Um, and I did, I'm sorry, I forgot, I did speak to Sandy. Um, but I'm wondering, and I'm here addressing this because quite honestly, I feel like a lot of times when I. Quite honestly, I feel like a lot of times when I go to our. Athletic department or person, I hit a brick wall, so I don't know if there's a committee. Uh, uh, I know you're on the safety committee, you were very, you got back to me. John, I know you got back to me, um, and I, you did too. I know, but actually, I know that you did, Chris, um. But my question is, when I see, and I know you're doing the best you can, there's a lot of moving parts, but. My concern is I was. We have a wall that's completely exposed, just like the wall behind you with no mats on it. And I sat there and I watched two basketball games take place with nothing in place on either end, actually. But this, this, this one was open and exposed and then the, the, um. Stage, one day I went, the mats were gone, and then the next time I went for the, one was the alumni game after Thanksgiving. And then the next one was the boys scrimmage, I think. Um, and then when I went to the boys scrimmage, there were now two big gaping open holes on the stage end. And still no mat over here. Now, my daughter was just coming back from a concussion, worked with Ms. Lindstedt. Telling her, safety, 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 which I absolutely a thousand percent agree with, but how can we tell her that, and then. There's nothing protecting, I mean, she took a slam, that's why I wasn't here earlier. I was at the basketball game, but she did, she hit, she hit the floor today and there is a mat, I appreciate that there's something there, but. There is a mat, it's a gymnast mat, again, it's something, it's better than not having anything there, so I appreciate that. But I felt that my concern, when I reached out to. I've always been taught, if you have a concern, go to the person directly you think is the person you should be speaking to. I did, I got a simple, oh, they're not in, like. The mats aren't in, hopefully they'll be here soon. And I was like, that's it, like, that's, that's, there's. Athletes that are going to, I mean, they can have lifelong injuries. And, um, again, of course, I was concerned because my daughter was just coming back and she's aggressive, so, um. Thank God that gymnast Matt was there today, but. In going through the appropriate, what I thought were chains of command. It was taking time, it was, you know, I went to the game, I saw these boys, that alumni game, like. They were playing so rough, um, and I'm a safety freak, so I should help you on your committee, um. But I just felt like, you know, to reach out to Ms. Lindstedt to get the, uh, well. We're just waiting on the mats, then I reached out to Mr. Dustin. Um, apparently he didn't quite understand, he thought I was just concerned with the. On the gym, on the, uh, stage side and the mats too. What was that? Someone talking? Oh, okay. Did you hear it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I was probably like, why? And I don't want, I, I know you guys want to go home, but, um, I. Sports schedules make it difficult, I go to my daughter's games and I try not to miss anything, which is why I'm late today, um. So one, is there a committee, like, so that. I know you're on the safety committee, Ms. Lindstedt is the athletic director, but is there a group of people that. I could reach out to with a concern like that, rather than having to go up a ladder, up a ladder and have it take time. Um, especially when it's something as important as trying to prevent injuries to athletes. Um, so that was my first thing, I also wanted to bring up, I'm wondering if somebody could, on that note with the committee piece. Confirm or take a look at the athletic, I brought, I had it up. But the section in the handbook about the mandatory sports meetings. I take it to read, and I'm speaking for all of you parents, um, but. It, the, the actual. Verbiage reads a couple of different ways, it says you are to attend one meeting per year. But we are required to attend. A meeting for every single sport they play, and it's the same thing, um. But I just, I also have a problem with getting a notice on a Saturday. Telling me that I have a mandatory meeting, I have to attend the following Wednesday. You can't make, you can't do that, like, if you want to make a meeting mandatory, you have to give a proper notice. I actually reached out and I asked, because I didn't get a family ID emailed, and I missed the one in the fall. So I didn't want to be in that situation again, and I was told at that time, so I did have a week up on everybody else, I think. But I did ask at that time, when is the meeting, she told me, oh, I'm gonna send out an email, the email came out about four days later, but again, three days before the mandatory meeting. So, those are things, I think, I don't know, as, you know, there are a lot of important things, budget. So I don't mean for this to overtake any of that stuff, and I know you guys are tired. But I just feel like there needs to be some kind of committee on the athletic side, and maybe there is, and I'm just not aware. Um, because something as important as my kid's safety is. Just as important as anything else, I think, same with the other kids, so. Again, if there is, if there is a committee, um, that encompasses. The athletics, extracurricular activities, everything lumped into one with a committee, I would love to. I would love to find out more about that. Um, again, the other thing is just taking a look at that, um. It's probably, um. Just taking a look at that, um, handbook, because it does, it could read either way, but it does say you are to attend one meeting per year. But then it does go into. It, and I can read it, but, um, but it does also mention the different sports too, so I would like some clarification to that because. I know I see it every year, every season, everybody's writing about, oh, I have to go to another meeting, and yeah, in the grand scheme of things. It's not that bad, but, um. You get penalized and when you, when you don't, when you don't go, which I understand, but. Again, the mandatory notice three days before the meeting. Is not necessarily convenient for a lot of parents, they try their best, and I know she does too, so, and that's it. So I don't know if anyone has. You took notes, it's probably five pages.
Corey, thank you.
Um, and I do want to second that on the meetings, um. I have four children that are three sport athletes and, um, trying to run a business and everything. I missed one of the meetings in the spring, which I already attended the fall, the winter one. Uh, my kids were told they weren't allowed to participate in the sport until we could meet one-on-one with her. Um, which we showed up to, um, three meetings, the first two, we stood up by. And my kids were told they couldn't participate in that first meet. Because they weren't at a meeting, but that's not what I was, uh, gonna talk about, um, I just wanted to touch base because, um. I just. I find it odd that, um. That the banners would offend anybody, um. As they've always been the norm, to put varsity players, basketball players on the gym wall. During the season, I currently have a senior and a junior, and I have numerous signs. Um, along with photos, uh, that have been put up over the years, since they were freshmen, uh, my children made varsity as freshmen. Um, they didn't get anything in middle school, they always looked up to the varsity players at Rome Wall and always said they were gonna help one as well. Um. I, uh, where was that? Uh, we've also never had the pictures of the cheerleaders or the pep band, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, we just never have. And it, it's never been an issue, um. It, it's just not a secret that we are known for basketball, um, I was contacted last weekend by a parent. Who walked in the gym and saw those banners, they were in there with their, uh, grade school. Children playing Saturday morning basketball, and, um, they actually, they called my husband, ran and raven, uh, how their kids looked up at those banners and thought they were awesome. And they told, um, this gentleman told his son, if you work hard, you'll have yours up there one day too. Um. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't have banners for our pep band, if they would like one, I think that there would be a spot for it and most likely on the stage, because they're not in the gym, they're on the stage. I also think it would be wonderful, we did something like this for two years as well. But I don't think it's something that we should be taking away from. These kids, as they were so proud of it, and I, I believe, uh, you guys probably received numerous emails from them. Because they were pretty upset when they were taken down. But I do find it odd that. Two people that work at this school decided to speak out against it, when we've never spoken out against this in the past. Um, I find it weird that a teacher. Has, has an issue with this, but she hasn't had an issue with it for the past six years she's worked in the school. Um, I find it odd that David spoke out, saying that he's against it and it's against the rules. Meanwhile, I had a meeting Thursday afternoon to prove it, um, where he did say that, uh. That he didn't have the permission of the parents or the athletes, and so when I asked him. If we can leave the banners off as they are, if parents and athletes all sign permission slips, he said, no, because we also need school approval. And they won't approve it, I asked him, who needs to approve it, Ruben said he needs to, and he won't. Right after that, he followed with, but the school board can override me, I don't think they will. Um, so I am asking you guys to take action to override this, because. He said that you guys have the right to, um, you can correct me if I'm misquoting you. Um, today, it was also stated that there was a complaint about the logo, I'm really curious, that complaint came from. One of the parents or athletes of one of the students who's on the poster. Because they also, they liked them. And we have the slips signing that they're okay with them and they're okay with the logo being on it. So, um, the last thing I wanted to point out. Is that, um, I found it odd that when I was. During that meeting, there was a lot of back and forth with these two gentlemen, which was great, I thought they added a lot to it. I spoke up once, and as soon as I did, Ruben quickly informed you guys. That you don't need to take. A back and forth from anybody in stand, but I was just asking for clarification on what, what John meant when he said the students, I didn't know. What he meant by, I was just asking for clarification, I wasn't trying to do a back and forth. That was the only time he informed the board that they don't need to listen to anybody sitting down here.
You know, surely, the only reason he did that is because technically. The public is supposed to only speak in these two terms. And.
No, and I, but there's been numerous, it was numerous comments from these two gentlemen.
Well, they're, they're members of the budget advisory. And, and, and so that's why, and it's only during, it's only during these.
Okay, I just want to clarify, I thought that was really odd, because I only asked questions, I didn't stand who you meant. And it was quickly said that you didn't have to take a comment. Um, but I am asking on behalf of the majority of the parents and the basketball players, if you guys could please. Put in some form of a vote, so their banners can go back up on the gymnasium walls.
Okay, thank you. So. That is something that we'll take up at another meeting, because.
The only issue with that is that the season is limited, and these kids, I mean, Corey has a, a daughter who's playing and she can speak, saying that she. She witnessed that how upset these children were when they were taken down, the girls just played a game, they didn't have their banners. We had a fan, actually, I think the fans spoke up to you since you walked in.
So.
Where are the banners? Where the heck are those banners, what the heck was that lady thinking, like? The fans were very upset not to see them, and if we put this off till the next meeting, which is what, January eighth? Um, how many games is that that these kids are missing, not having them out there? I mean, I'm not sure how many of you guys are sports people, but this means a lot to these kids.
So, just, so we reiterate what the principal stated was that. And what Sheila's been told. Is that they would go back up, there will be a process for that, but that was all about the logo, and so you took those home, I gave them to you Friday.
Well, I actually said I would come in and, um, cover the logo if they would feed them up as they were, um, which then was stated, no, they're coming down, um. But you told me that it could stay up with a logo if the board approved it and parents had consent. Because you said you won't approve it, the board can override your call.
Okay, so I said that. The policy states what it states, and that the only individuals who can overturn that policy is the school board. I do not recommend it overturning.
And he said he's gonna tell you guys he did.
So what's the current? What's, what's the current plan, oh, it's Ruben, I guess, what's the current plan from your point of view?
Yeah, but, I mean, it was, the, the principal stated and told you what his current plan was, and that's the, the plan, and the plan that he stated. Um. Included, once they are brought back, have the logo covered, not, we didn't ask for it. That they would put, um, the. Um, items up prior to games. So girls for the girls, boys for the boys, and so forth, and they could come down during classes. Um, during the school day.
That was never actually stated in any of my emails.
That, that was, that was not, but that's the schools.
She recommended, because her banner is on, the banner.
That, that's what the principal stated.
Would it be permissible for the, for me to speak, this is David, I'm still on the line here.
Is that okay?
Yes, sure. Go ahead.
So I just, you know, I want to reiterate what I said earlier to the board, that the concern on these, on the advertisement. Which was done and has not been done in the past on, um, banners that display our student athletes or our school logo. The concern was the advertisement of a local company, which the school did not solicit, and the school was not consulted on prior to. Our student athletes or our logo being placed on the banner with that advertisement. So that in itself was the violation of the policy which the board has enacted, and the administration is simply upholding that policy. Shirts that the school has solicited and gotten approval for, which I know Sheila was just holding up. Those do have ads that we solicited in compliance with the policy, because the school is permitted with, with permission. To solicit fundraising from donors, that was not the case here, and that has not historically been done with the banners placed in the Pratt. So the concern was specifically the, the banners themselves, which again are not school banners, are not being donated to the school, nor has the school been solicited. For permission to do that, contain an ad for a single local company. We typically, when we do an advertisement like the T-shirts, we open up the ads to all local companies who want to participate. Again, that option wasn't even given here, because this was done by a specific company without consulting the school, so that's the concern that the school was, was calling attention to. And why we asked for the banners to come down in compliance with the policy. In terms of displaying them in the Pratt, part of the reason why the, the banners came down, and we did not wait for somebody to come in and cover them. A couple of reasons, we identified three individuals who did not have photo permission to have their photos displayed, which places the school district at liability. So again, that was something that the school was not consulted on in terms of checking that, that information, and the other piece is that. When the students came in to place the posters up, they nailed them into the soundproofing in the, in the gym despite being asked to do so with. Um, command strip hooks, so the facilities team did have to take them all down. A, again, in order to get them to Sheila to be corrected, so we could follow the process to get them back up. And B, so we can get the appropriate command strips put in place and remove the tags from the soundproofing and kind of get things reset. So, the, my job as the principal of the school is to look out for the space for, for its usefulness for all students. But also to make sure that school board policies are being followed, particularly when I've been made aware of an issue with those, and. I understand that there's a disconnect or a dispute or a different point of view from the public comment that's being made. However, there is a process to get them restored that does not require the board to overturn. A policy which is in place for, for a good reason, in terms of the advertisements in schools.
Hey, thank you, David.
So I, I'd like to point out the T-shirts that I've instead made this fall, which was not a fundraiser. Which also, on the back, she hasn't just passed up to students, that was the sole reason that she gave out to the businesses. The back has eleven advertisements on it, and they're checking it out with the students. For no fundraising purpose, so it goes against what they said. And the rule states in the handbook that the, the school board can make exceptions for, this isn't an advertisement, you can call it an advertisement. But it's there just stating my business supports the local athletes. I offered to cover it up to avoid them from removing them, and then they took them down anyways, so. That's why I was, they said, only this one needs to be covered, not the photographer who's already gotten work out for me. But only mine does this, so there's two businesses listed, only one needs to be covered.
And I would just point out that a photographer's credit for their work is not the same as an advertisement for a company. So that, that is, again, that's a copyright issue with the photographer, so I, I'm not sure that there's any value to me answering any more questions, I think. We've been very clear, uh, it's unfortunate that the sequence of events and the process for getting them back up. Is, is not shared, I guess, or understood, however, I'm, I'm just waiting to get the, the posters back. With the ad covered and to get parent permission for the three individuals in particular who did not have photo permission, and then we can begin putting them back up, um, for games.
So what I'm asking you of the board then, is if you can approve my donation of these banners and allow my business to be. Still on the banners, supporting our athletes. Since my banners have gone up, I've been asked to sponsor three other things and donate money to other users.
David, I have a question for you, this is Christine.
David, I have a question for you. This is Christine. I know Sheila has some signatures from parents, but it sounds like we do not have within this school. Uh, permission to photograph or display photographs of certain students.
That's correct.
What would happen if um, the parents did not change that waiver on. Alma. I presume that's where they have to change it. I mean, we wouldn't consider putting up posters of part of the team, would we?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of the reason why in the past this has been a more collaborative process than what took place this year. And again, I, I'm not going to go into the specific emails. I've seen all of the exchange of emails and text messages and things like that. The, the consultation to administration was more like a telling that this was, had been done and saying, when can we come put them up? And nobody wants to hurt students or, or tell them that they can't have something like that. But you're exactly right. The concern when we don't. Uh, uh, somebody going to a private studio to have somebody create a banner. Does not constitute them then permitting the school district to hang those items up, which is why we have our photo waiver and, and media waiver. And three of the individuals currently do not have that on file. So I think you're right. The concern and why we usually do this in a bit more collaborative manner is to make sure the whole team and the whole scenario and. Uh, it can be done in a way that is, is equitable. And I will say that the size of these banners, just to, and there was another public comment. From a parent who has a legitimate perspective, whether she's an employee or not. She, she does, she's not the only person who feels that way about the Pratt. You know, the prior iterations of, of displaying for athletes have either primarily focused on seniors. Which again would be a specific space in the Pratt that was dedicated to them. Or they've been smaller sized items that don't take up all of the wall space and things like that. So I just, again, I want to be clear that I'm not against. Anybody getting recognition for the things they do. My concern is the principle of the school, when it was brought to my attention was the advertisement, which is not typically done with this. And is in violation of the policy the board has enacted and the process by which they were. Done, which didn't allow us to again, even get photo permissions for some of these individuals. And we have offered a process um, to the people who are, are seeking to put these up to get that rectified. I'm just waiting for that to be done.
I have the move point to talk about this point because if there's kids who literally cannot have any. We all know you have to have. Rental permission to post a picture. Until that happens, I don't think there's anything we can do about that.
I'm pretty confident parents are willing to sign a form if he needs a specific one signed.
Yeah, I think so. Parental photo on Alma, but um. So I guess to expedite or to, to, to kind of rectify it or whatever. Is it permissible to, I don't know, I guess waivers, I don't know what it is for parents until. Until the whole team can be put up. However, it should be displayed, David, you had talked about games or whatever. For parents to bring in their kids' posters. Again, that's not still the whole, whole team. I don't know. I just feel like this is kind of a point that we can't, there's nothing we can do.
What I, what I did offer in, in my response to the situation was that I would put together a very basic photo waiver for this specific item. That would not, still not allow the advertisement because again, that violates school district policy whether a parent. Says they're okay with it or not. The school district has a policy that is very clear about utilizing our logo, our school, our facility or our students. Um, for advertising purposes. So that piece is, was not part of the discussion, but I did place a very clear sequence of events. Um, that would include a parent um, photo waiver for these posters to go up so that would cover everybody. And if Sheila's correct, which I believe she probably is, that every parent would sign that, it's not going to be an issue once they've done that. But I, I can't obviously take a, they probably would without actually getting a district form signed for that purpose. But that. All of this has been offered to Sheila um, last week, in fact, when I got the, the initially emailed out about the concern with the posters. And again, I'm just waiting for that, for the ad to be covered and the posters returned and then we can do the photo waiver and get them up.
Okay, so what I'm asking the board is since they want to remove them, I did offer to cover the ad for the, believe it well, the girls' game today. Which didn't happen. And Ruben said that the board can say that it can stay as it is. I'm asking them, I'm asking the board. To approve the banners as they are without being altered.
But surely they still can't go up. Because of the photos.
He just said he's gonna get it signed, that he's gonna get them a temporary thing to sign. The photo thing. Um, Davidson, he's gonna take care of it. So what I'm asking you guys to approve is the banners as they are. Without being altered.
And you're, what you're saying is like without them being altered, so.
Without me having to tape up, covering up. The bottom of the room. So I'm asking not to cover, have to cover this. On every banner is what I'm asking them. That, that's what I'm asking the board to approve. As David said, he will get it approved, he will go through, speaks to the three individual. That need their photo permission. What I'm asking for is you guys to approve. And to let my business acknowledge that we're supporting these athletes and we. That's what I'm asking of the board. Because in the policy, if you read it, it states you guys can make an exception.
Great, thank you, Sheila. And thank you for clarifying that. So is there anybody interested in doing? Something at this point?
This is a. Hard one, not just because of the photo issue, obviously don't want to violate the policy, but the fact that they were up.
Over a week.
In these situat- and in these situations, what I try to. Tell myself is these situations are like kind of being conducted between adults, like us adults in here, right? But ultimately, as a. As a board and a community, I think we need to try and make the right. Decisions for the kids, not. Ourselves get in the way. And when I say the kids, I mean. All the kids. And so that, I guess that's what I'm asking myself is what. How do we comply with our policies and do the best things by the kids and, and given the background that these were. Installed. Properly.
Some of them were, I bought the command strips.
Yeah. I mean, I'm probably not as coherent as I. Should, shouldn't be right now, but ultimately, I think that. I would like to see us work towards that solution. I guess I'll ask. Guess we're still in public comment. Uh, Sheila, like the, the solution that. Uh, the principal has proposed. That these banners, you know, we'll soon will get the permission, we'll assume that um. You can. Cover it up or would, would cover it up.
I'd rather not, considering the fact that I was trying to do a quick solution since I found out you guys had to prove that. And I said I would come in immediately to cover them. And they didn't like that and they removed the banners anyways. And I know you guys can approve it and we. It's not abnormal. We recognize at basketball games, two businesses right now. One that's also a concrete business at halftime, every home game. We also put the, but logos of all of our local businesses that support it on T-shirts for these kids. We give them out. So we did this with Ellington. We had no, we did not try to offend anybody. Um, we tried blending it in the best we could. We're not looking for business. We're, we're a commercial company. We're not getting business for basketball games, but we do support our local athletes.
But I just, I just have to be frank here, but. You're using. Kids. Faces.
Bodies.
Bodies. In Conan uniforms to advertise your business. And it might be a small app. But it's gonna be all over the Pratt. And I, I own a business. I mean, I own a small business. And, and so I understand the impact of having my logo displayed all over the Pratt. It, it would be repeated. It would be visible. He. I haven't seen the posters up on the Pratt, but they're beautiful. Congratulations. I mean, they're, they're gorgeous. And they would continue to be gorgeous even with the logo covered. I mean. I'm sorry, well, this is a business.
Before they knew I owned the business. And that's for, the majority of you have been on it to know the administration.
It would be an issue if it was my logo. Honestly and truly. It violates rules. You were, you were using children to advertise. And I know this wasn't your intent. And I understand you're trying to get the background. But you were using inadvertently, using children's names and bodies to advertise a business. And. And I, I feel like in the beginning, it, it wa- it, it's never been that for you, an advertisement for you that has never been. However, it's turning into that. Because. A solution is being offered. And now you're saying, no, I want.
I have the email correspondence where I said I, we, I offered that solution, my husband and I offered it. And said we'll come and we'll cover it up. And that turned into the banners are still coming down. So we tried offering a quick solution. And then I had a meeting, I know they can override it. It's never been an issue in our community in the past for businesses for. Our sports all over the place. Like that wasn't what the intent was. And I'm just shocked because it wasn't a problem for over a week. Until Heather one said, a phone call to a parent on the girls' team and asked who owned this business. Right after she found out. That I requested it. And then he said.
Sheila. Please, please leave. Personnel out of it. I mean, you, we, we've really given you a chance to make your, your case and I, I think we really listened. There every time you. Use the name of one of our staff and say that they did this. It, it really just goes against the whole concept of. Public comment.
I'm letting you know. But I think I'm just asking if the board is willing to vote on it. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, is there anybody on the board who wants to vote on this? Okay, I'm not seeing. Well, go ahead.
I just want to know, like, I feel like the biggest impact, kind of like what you were saying, the biggest impact here is gonna be the kids. And so. The underlying problem here is just the logo. So. I feel as though fighting for the logo is going to make it so that the posters can't go up at all.
I'm asking for approval of the whole, because they already took banners down after we offered that suggestion.
And they're offering to put them back up.
Yep, and. Our staff took them down and our staff will flip them back up because we have to, we shouldn't be having. Not overly pleased when I heard that students were putting these things up as well. We cannot. Risk that type of liability with other people who are outside of our organization. Putting things up and taking these down. Solution is there. We're trying to work with. The situation.
So there's no. Workout here. This is just. Logo or no go.
I, I just want the board to. No, that's discrimination, which you've been part of the board. And you have not, but you two have any witness over the past two years. How attacked my family has been. And I want them to realize that this has been up for over a week without an issue. Until the connection with.
Okay, so. Thank you. I think, I think we've heard what you want. Unless somebody wants to make a motion on this topic. Then I think we need a motion.
We have um, one more item that might be bored to matter that.
Okay.
We want to agree. Yeah, I was, uh, and this, this is just for, we can table this. But we do have to have the warrant article, all warrant articles, all set by the eleventh. We do meet you for that. Um, what I was, what I think I'll do is have Carrie get all the language for the typical warrant articles that we have. I didn't know if you had. A number, like for the special ed, the student services warrant article and the other warrant article. So just so that we can. Finalize that, we'll get our, the warrant articles drafted, so we have the language. And then we can finalize the numbers. I, I'm seeing that we're not ready to finalize numbers tonight.
So how much is in the special ed?
Four hundred fifty.
They do, should have the finance committee meeting Thursday. I don't know, to remove these numbers.
You know, for finance committee meeting to, for the purpose of looking at warrant articles if you want to. All right.
Yes.
Okay, before you close your. I know it's been a lot of budget discussions. Poster discussions. But. Come from manufacturing business in the medical world for almost thirty years. I think you did a lot of work on that contract that made it. A good one because your employees, I've always considered to be a big success. So. Was around the voters. So I just wanted to say that. I could tell a lot of work went into that. Just. From the, from the green side of the, I've known anything.
I just came off of the twenty day parental leave and that makes a big difference.
Great, the organization offered that.
Okay, so Charlie. Charlie offered a motion to adjourn.